It is Wednesday, January 24th, 2018. I would ask that we all stand. I've asked Gary Williams if he would lead the invocation, and then we will have the pledges to the flag. Gary?
That's correct. Our heavenly, excuse me, our heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to gather this morning to do the business for Grimes County. Bless all these officers and commissioners and all of our other people that are around here, as well as our, as our, as our early responders, that they may all be safe and come up with the best decisions as possible. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Join me in the pledges, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
If you'd be seated, please. Second item on our agenda is public comments. Do we have any public comments?
I do, Judge.
Did somebody give a notice we're having free donuts today? And the donuts didn't show?
For most of you know, I'm the building maintenance manager, community service coordinator. Went to the THC conference in Austin last week, I believe it was.
What does THC stand for?
Texas Historical Commission. It was a pride moment from Grimes County. We haven't been represented there in quite some time. I'm just gonna leave it there. I've tried real hard when I've been a maintenance manager to get us represented. They've taken notice. We were in the top 10 stewards of Texas historical courthouses, and this is the book they presented us. So, I'm not heritage to Grimes County. I have roots in Grimes County. At this time, my decision, I'm gonna present this to Commissioners' Court, and they can do with what they wanna do with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since you've been on TV, could you autograph this for us?
The judge can.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. We'll have that for public review. Any other public comments? Yes, ma'am. Please step to the podium. Identify yourself.
I'm Lisa Culbertson. I live in Keith. I've been into animal rescue like about the last four years, and I had just decided I'm gonna start coming to these meetings and beg for an animal shelter, and I went online and saw the video of the meeting and saw that you had something in progress. So, I didn't know how far along you were, and I was just, I had none of us in my neck of the woods in rescue had heard anything about it. So, I'd just like to get more information about it, how it's going, and I'd like, you know, to make sure a lot of us are involved, that we've been, you know, picking up these dogs off the roads and getting them vetted and into homes and stuff, and just hoping we can all be part of it. And I did wanna ask, is it gonna be an open intake? Well, I guess, I guess these are the things I'm hoping that maybe they can be addressed. I'm just wondering if it's like an open intake shelter. I did read some of the things about the passivity and all. And like if you gotta vet on staff and the trainer and all to assess the animals and... So, I just, I just wanna learn more about that, what the procedure is, and like protocols for the vaccinating and warming and all that when they come in. So, I'm just curious how, how far along it is and what's gonna happen.
Okay. It is an agenda item today, so we should fill in a few of the blanks for you.
Okay. But I know there's a ton of dump dogs in my area. I picked up 13 alone just in the last two and a half years. A lot of them went to a rescue that I fostered for in Hearn, and I know Rufus Refuge has picked up quite a few dogs. And I don't know if I'm allowed to hand you some stuff. I just don't know, this is the kind of stuff you might run into. I didn't know, I didn't know how much you guys are, you know, involved with, but that's, none of the sort of things that we see out there.
We'll certainly take your information and review it. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Don't want any donuts after that. Are there any other public comments? Would you please recognize yourself, or recog- tell the group who you are, please, sir.
Good morning. My name is David Tollis. I live in Plannersville, Texas. And I wanted to speak briefly to the agenda item concerning the animal shelter. In the audience today, there are several active members of the rescue community in Grimes County, which is very, very large. These folks are totally supportive of this plan and want to be involved in moving it forward. So, what I would like to ask today is that we try to make an effort to involve the rescue community, since they are the folks that are solving the problem for us right now. If we can get them involved and energized, we can make this animal shelter a success, a huge success, in a very short timeframe. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments? And I'll take the opportunity, I just want to thank one of our employees who, because of the work that she has done recently, I've had two other employees come to me and say, wow, Mary Johnson has gotten our records and everything put in the system, and I've gone to look for some data, and just like that, she was able to gather the information. So, Mary Johnson, I just wanna thank you for providing service to our employees so they can provide service to our citizens. Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comments? Then with the court's permission, I would like to bring agenda item number 13, County Court of Law, Michelle Sanders. I'd like to move that up on the schedule. We do have a, an emergency probate that's been called, and we've got some of those responsible for taking care of that court in here this morning. So, with your permission, Commissioners? Okay? All right. So, we'll bring up agenda item number 13. Michelle Sanders, where are you? The agenda item says, "Review and consider and take action to designate visiting court reporters and visiting judges as either independent contractors or employees."
So, it was brought to my attention last, I believe it was Wednesday, my court reporter approached me that she had some invoices that had been held because the auditor's office felt that she needed to be put on payroll versus being paid as an independent contractor. And so...
Put on payroll, as in what status?
As in an employee status.
Okay.
Versus independent contractor. We do not have an official court reporter, so I am actually bringing court reporters in by the day. We do have one that we like to use frequently as much as possible, but she does work in other counties, so I have to, to take basically what we can get when I schedule court reporters. And I have a little difference of opinion on whether she should be classified as an employee or as a court reporter, as does she. So, with the difference of opinion, we ask that we put it on the agenda so that we can get her invoices paid or make the decision on how we're going to pay her.
Okay. What is, what is your opinion?
My opinion is that she is an independent contractor, and I have brought in, this is the IRS publication 15A. I printed up to the pertinent part so you could see exactly where I was getting the information, but I did not print the whole packet. I did bring a whole packet with me should anybody wanna look at the entire packet.
In the fairness of time and sump, can you tell us what this says in summary?
Yes. If we flip to page seven on here, this particular printout is going to tell you, basically, this page, from page seven on, gives you all kinds of examples of different types, whether it would be considered an employee, whether it would be considered an independent contractor. I've gone through all of this, and I still come to the conclusion that she should be considered an independent contractor. Also, I wanted to point out, the start portion is the relief provision that states that if you have a reasonable basis for not treating a worker as an employee, you may be relieved from having to pay employment taxes for that worker. To get this relief, you must file all required federal information returns on a basis consistent with your treatment of the worker, which from this point, we have always done this as an independent contractor and given a 1099 at the end of the year. It says that your predecessor must not have treated any worker holding a substantially similar position as an employee for any periods beginning after 1977. The county has not had a official court reporter here, which would be, if we did have an official court reporter...
Official, you meaning employed?
Employee, that we pay as an employee, you know, working full-time or part-time in an employee capacity.
To give you an example, Judge, the two district judges have official court reporters that are full-time employees.
Right.
That, you know, in their court every time. They control where they work, how they work, where they work, all that. The county court of law doesn't have that.
Okay.
And we don't, as a county, pay for their court reporters. We pay a portion of what they pay according to our population for the district court reporters.
So, who's holding up the invoice? Is it treasurer or auditor?
The auditor's office is my understanding.
Mary Nichols?
Yes.
Do you have an opinion on this?
I do, Your Honor. In the last several auditor's conventions that we've gone to, we've had IRS agents there talking to us about court reporters.
Yes, ma'am.
And the fact that we do tell them where to be, when to be there, and, you know, what work, what equipment they're gonna be using. We don't tell them where they have to purchase their supplies, but we do tell them what work they must perform, you know? And there have been quite a few counties that have been audited, and they've gotten a hiccup on this, and some of them have had to pay some nice fees because they pay some of them through payroll and some of them to accounts payable. Now, where that hurts is if they pay somebody with a social security number and accounts payable in the same year and then pay them through payroll in the same year, so they get a W-2 and a 1099. All the other counties that have been, have gone through this IRS audit have now evaded if, if a court reporter is a sole proprietor, they have to be listed as an employee. If they have a EIN or TIN number and have more than one person employed, then they can be contract labor. But if they're using their social security number and they're a sole proprietor, according to everything that we've been told in the auditor's conferences the last couple of years, is that they need to be considered as an employee because we're telling them when to be there, where to be there, and what equipment they're gonna use, even though we may not supply that equipment.
May I interject here? And here's where we kinda disagree. First off, we don't tell them what kind of equipment to use at all. I have no control over it. In fact, my court reporter doesn't use a stenographer machine. It is a different device, I don't even know what they call it. We don't control the equipment they use, and really, to the extent that we don't control whether they're here or not. What I do is I set my dockets. I put it out there and say, hey, are you available this day? And she says, no, I'm not. I gotta be somewhere else. So, I find me another court reporter. So, I don't tell Joette, for example, you have to be here on this day. I put, I have a court docket. I call Joette, and Joette goes, no, can't be there. This week, for example, we have four different court reporters that are gonna be working here, four contract court reporters.
For the county court of law?
Two or three of them, or two of them in the county court of law. One is handling a special statutory probate judge who's cleaning up some cases she has.
Oh, okay.
And then we have one for...
Well, the visiting judges was the other one that I told you need to be done, and that is, stretch for well.
So, this is not just for the county court of laws, it's also for the district courts, possibly?
Well, they, I mean, they do use visiting court reporters.
Okay.
Occasionally, not very often, 'cause they, they've got full-time court reporters. But we do have other courts that come in, such as the CPS court uses a different court reporter, the 4D courts, the Attorney General Court uses a different court reporter. In fact, Joette, the one we use a lot, handles the 4D court for some other counties, so she's frequently can't be here on certain dates because she's working in other counties, which is another indication to me, she's an independent contractor. Because I can't say, Joette, I need you here. You're here, you're mine. No. She says, I'm handling 4D court in Cherokee County. So, I don't control when she's here. She's here when she's available.
Okay.
But if she's not, and for example, the other week, I think since I've been on the bench, I've used four different court reporters. And I think they're trying to simplify it by saying, you know, yes, an employee identification number would make it simpler, but I don't, I know for a fact that is not the sole governing factor of how you determine an independent contractor. If it was, we could get around all kinds of stuff that way. They have a list of factors. I've looked at them all, and I'm willing to talk to anybody that can explain to me why she's not, but we literally have no control over how she does her job, when she does her job. Her job, we don't pay her equipment, we don't pay her supplies, we don't pay her travel, we don't pay her training. We will pay for anything. We pay her 4D.
Except for her time.
And I understand...
Gotcha. Anne Beggins. I'm gonna go. Mary Ann Zions is here from TAC.
Is she out there?
What Mary was speaking to, as far as you can't pay one employee with a 1099 and one as an employee, is that provision on page seven of that 13. If we paid an official court reporter as an employee, we couldn't bring somebody in as an independent contractor. That is, that is very true, but that's not our circumstance.
And one other thing to make clear, Judge, my issue is, I really don't care whether they're independent contractor or an employee. My concern is, when I went through this with Judge Lamont and we were setting this up, we increased the court report budget significantly to like 10,000.
Excuse me, Judge Lamont should've taken care of this?
I really don't. It's all...
That's a record note, and I'll talk to him.
We went around and around, because I actually wanted a full-time official court reporter. But I said, okay, let's, first year, we'll do a contract situation. He didn't think I would use that. I'm gonna tell you, I'm already gonna bust my court reporter budget this year wide open, even using it as a contract employee. If we start now doing load of benefit, load out of there, if I'm using a court reporter, I assume that she works over 30 hours a week, which is very, very possible, then she falls into category of full-time employee who's entitled to insurance, vacation, all of that. That's not there. So, that's my concern.
That's not there in your budget right now.
It's not in the budget. So, we got the potential here of running into, like, let's get off my back, I want a full-time court reporter, but we're talking about, I'm already gonna bust this budget wide open with the court reporters, with as much court as I'm holding. You, you start making the payment of the employee if, whether or not, that's gonna really cause us some hard day financially.
Ms. Nichols, when you say some of the other counties have received a hiccup, what kind of a hiccup have they, have they been financially fined?
Some of them have, yes.
Well, that was for having an employee, a court, actual court reporter employee, and then also paying another one as a contract labor.
Oh, the same one.
Oh, the same, well, that's even worse.
Yeah, right. And that's what got them caught.
But this way, we haven't, we've never paid one as an employee, correct?
Correct. Except for our one in District 12 Court.
Mary Ann Zions, we asked you to join us. Fine, I'm fine. And the question is, on a court reporter, full-time employee or contract employee? And I, and I guess one thing that would resolve it is, or would help, is if the contract court reporters had an EIN?
But if we wanna get, have our contract, because we did explore this with Jeanette, if she is going to do that, she's required to get a DBA. If she gets a DBA, the Court Reporters Association then considers her a perm, in which they require her to file all of these reports, pay a substantial fee, because they consider her as employing other court reporters and actually managing it like a court reporter service, which she is not.
Right.
You know, so she can't do it that way just to get an EIN number. That would be, create a lot of hardship for her financially.
Okay. Mary Ann, do you have an opinion?
Yeah, I walked around the middle of this one. I'm like, what am I walking into? It's an IRS issue, as to what, how they look, and I'm walking at the tail end of this whole conversation, how they look at an individual. Are they an employee? Are they an independent contractor? And I think you answered it perfectly when you said, "indivisible status."
And excuse me, Mary Ann is with TAC, which is Texas Association of Counties, and she's one of their human resources subject matter experts, so...
Thank you. So, yes, there isn't a letter floating around with counties on this issue, and it does create a hardship for those offices, because you hang out the fund, the other things, if you treat them as employee. I totally get it. So, you really need to study this further. I don't know what the status is today with the situation. There you go. That's a, yeah. This is a, most court reporters, are you finding on your listserv handles that they are employees with counties?
Most of them are switching over to that.
Yeah. That's what I've been hearing out there as well, because of this.
I would say we have a couple of issues. One, the first issue is, we probably need to figure out how we're going to get the court reporter paid for the invoices that have been submitted, especially since she's an individual or independent. I don't know what her cash flow situation is, but...
She needs it professionally.
We need to make, we need to make a decision on getting those invoices paid. And then the second decision is, moving forward, how are we gonna continue that process? And I think that generates some discussion. Commissioners, y'all have any other questions or Commissioner Walker? Is she, how is she paid? By the hour or by the...
Per day.
Per day?
Yeah. She's here two hours, she gets, I think it's 350 a day.
Well, who dictates the amount that she gets paid?
She does.
She does?
That's her billing, billing rate.
And she pretty much tells you if she's available or not to work for you?
Yes.
Sounds like an independent contractor to me.
I can, I don't do IRS stuff. I despise the IRS. But I have, as a lawyer, worked in work for comp cases and other types of cases where it's important to distinguish between who's an employee and who's an independent contractor, like for personal worker comp claims. And everything traditionally that I have ever been taught as an attorney, she qualifies as an independent contractor. I don't tell her where to work, I don't tell her when to work, I don't set her pay rate, I don't tell her what equipment to use, I don't train her, I don't pay for anything, nothing. I have no control over this woman, other than when she's in my courtroom, I can tell her what to do. As far as sit there and take this down, I have no control over her. And if she doesn't wanna be there that day, she doesn't have to be there that day, you know?
We don't want employees like that.
Huh?
We don't want, we don't want employees like that.
Well, and I think that the big factor that is being overlooked is that we are not and have not employed a court reporter as an employee in the past, which is the real deciding factor as far as the IRS. But one of the sheets that I filled out for you was the checklist that you do to determine whether it's an employer or an independent contractor. Yes. And I brought blank ones in case you all want to, you know, do your own checklist off of the information. I also brought just an article that cited a case, I was not able to pull the case out, but it's a tax, tax court case that was basically the same issue, in which the court reporter was determined to be an independent contractor. And then this is not official and not to be used, as it will say in here, as far as a disclosure, but this is actually a letter that was, from the IRS, that was written to an employer that had requested that they determine whether or not the court reporter was an independent contractor or a court reporter. And in this particular letter, it's the opposite of the one that's flowing around, and it's because the circumstances are different as far as the court reporter is being employed. You asked about the invoices that were being held. I have the invoices that were being held here. If we decide to make her an employee, these, the amount will change from 300 to higher amount in order to cover those expenses. And as the judge stated, we then have to consider holidays and insurance and...
Can I make a suggestion?
You should, Judge. You should make. Commissioner Walker?
I'd like to make the suggestion that we go ahead. We've been covering it as independent contractors most of the time with everybody else. Go ahead and, and pay the invoices, and then give us time to look at the information presented to us today, because what's happening is, we're trying to listen to Utah, both we, everybody talk, but you can't talk and read at the same time. It's very hard for me. And to explore what you're saying, other counties are running to a little bit more. You know, have we had a little bit of this information prior to, maybe, and we could put it out on the listserv and kinda determine where we're going with that. Mr. County Attorney, do you have any suggestions?
This is the first time I've been made aware of this issue other than seeing on the agenda, so I think your suggestion that pay it as we've paid, the risk is the same as the risk we've taken before, and it's interim decision, and then you all set it for workshop, we're on a different agenda. Do your own homework if you want to. I just wanna be sure that Mary Ann is with the entity that will ensure, in all likelihood, a claim. And I say ensure, it's a risk pool. But if they have concerns about the IRS's interpretation, it's not that Mary's wrong and Tuck's right, or that Tuck's wrong and Mary's right, it's not either one of those. It is a tough call that you have to decide based upon the risk. And so, when you look at all this, you're gonna have to decide, what are the risks to us? You know, you know how I feel about it. I certainly would not want the county to spend any more money on someone to be, on naming someone an employee, especially when that person's not adamant that, by golly, I am an employee. I would hate for the county to have to spend more money in that direction. But in the end, if it's gonna cost the county more money for the Department of Labor, Department of Justice, or whatever it is, that claim is made that we should've treated them as employee, then obviously it makes sense to save, to do the right thing so we avoid that claim later. But I have what you have, and I haven't read it, so I agree.
Just one issue with that? And I agree, we should've had much more time. I thought that this issue was settled, you know, back in September when it first came up until, you know, just a few days ago. So, the issue that we do have is that we can't issue a 1099 and a W-2 to the same person in the same year, or we are definitely in violation. And that's why the invoices were held and were...
What are those, 2017 invoices?
No, these are, these are Tanyary's. These are the court dates that she's worked for us here in January.
Which is why the issue didn't crop up, I covered November, December, when our court was in session with her, because we were just continuing as we had done before. And so, January 1st, it popped up, and it was through miscommunication, because we also weren't gonna wait. We talked this with that one. Thought we knew what we were doing here.
So, for 2018, we would have to decide whether she's a W-2 employee or a 1099 employee, so...
She can't be a 1099 for a while, and then we do change her to an employee? Why is that?
That's the specific IRS requirement.
That's a red flag to the IRS.
I'm sorry, one more time. Ms. Nichols?
That's a red flag to the IRS, and they'll be in here on us, and they'll go through all the records.
Your start section in the, the IRS publication, 15A, that's, you know, that excludes you from that relief provision as well, if it's not consistent, is what excludes you from the relief provision that they've built in there for an employee that is acting under the belief that they're acting right.
Commissioner Walker, do you wanna put your thoughts in this form of motion?
Well, I would say if it's...
Commissioner, could I, could I?
Go ahead.
Since you've just gotten it, and I hate it for Jeanette, she does a great job, but I would ask that you at least set it off for three days on another agenda and give yourself time. If we waited this long, you can, hopefully, three days more is not gonna kill anybody.
That's what my suggestion was gonna be. Why don't we look at this at least as early as, as early as possible, you know, so that we can determine? I mean, this, that'll give us time to read and ask questions like we like to do, and then come back and make a decision.
Okay, so our three days would be Monday.
We did put it off till Monday.
We have a, we have some assignments on Monday. We could do, we could do Tuesday at after 10, or 10, say 10:30. Commissioners, does that sound reasonable?
I think it would be afternoon for me Tuesday.
And we're in court in the morning.
And we can't do afternoon on Tuesday. Can we put it on Wednesdays?
I guess we can put it on Wednesdays.
We'll put it, we can have a workshop after our Wednesday agenda. Would that work with you folks?
It works for me, but...
Or just put it on the agenda Wednesday. I mean, we'll have time to review it.
Okay.
Oh, we, I just got the information that we've already paid an invoice this year. Paid up an invoice once this year, so they didn't even get held back.
Is the die cast for 2018 based on that?
Well, I, from what I have read, I'm comfortable that they are an independent contractor.
I am too.
I am too.
And there's a court case here that she's given us that said...
He tried to prove that he wasn't an independent contractor.
The same scenario, the judge ruled that...
That's from 1996, though.
The laws changed?
Has it, yeah.
I mean, shouldn't have changed that much.
Well, if they've already paid, then...
They just have to change these things every year.
How many?
Two years almost.
I don't think the law's changed, but you always worried about interpretation and the law changing.
Yeah.
But I don't think they're going to change what Constitution...
So that takes a little heat off since the individual has received some funds. Commissioner Walker, you want to?
Can I say something? I mean, I'm not involved in this, but it seems to me...
Now you are.
If we have to, if we've already paid her as an independent contractor, and y'all want to do that for the year, why can't when you plan the budget, if you want to make her an employee, make it effective July, uh, January 1st of next year? And she would be independent contractor up until that time? And then you could, if you put that in your budget to make her an employee, then she could change over on January 1st? And wouldn't that kind of solve the problem? Because you wouldn't be issuing a 1099.
Let me say, Judge, let me say, this is not about what you want to do. This is about what that person is. And if you make the wrong call, you get sanctioned for it. That's the point we're making here. And so it's not about what you feel like or what you want to do. It's about what the law, what the IRS requires you to do. And you may be in a spot where it is gray, and you're going to have to make the best call you can with the best advice that you can. I've heard very little from Mary Ann this morning, and I know that you have. And I would suggest that at least you quiz her a little more, uh, whether you recess this and let, uh, the court folks go handle the probate and let folks who have business today handle their business and come back to Mary Ann. However you want to do it, but I don't think it's a knee jerk decision. And you may think the die is cast and it's been done. Reality is, the sooner you do the right thing, the less of a sanction you're going to have later if, if in fact you previously did the wrong thing.
Sure.
So don't do this in haste. I'm saying, I agree, I'll be honest with you. I think it's independent contractor by everything that I know. But if there are IRS opinions, or if there, there's information circulating out there that someone's interpretation, someone's who, whose opinion matters more than mine, if that's out there that says that, that person is a, potentially an employee, we ought to consider it. I mean, that's, that's the question. Not, my gut is this, or I want it to be that. Instead, let's consider it a little more. And then ultimately, you're going to have to take the risk. And when it comes down the right way, you, you can take responsibility for it. If it comes down the wrong way, you can take the blame for it.
Well, Ms., Ms., Mary, um, if, when did y'all learn of this?
Well, we've heard about it for the last two, um, October sessions. And, um, it wasn't in October.
Yeah, it was more serious this past October. We did bring it up, we were talking about it, but we couldn't make a change at that time, until, until August, December. And so we've been talking about it back and forth for the last several weeks. Um, but it's, it's on the line. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a...
It's, I mean, it's right there borderline. Granted, the majority of the counties that got hit on it is because they had some that they did W-2s and some they did 1099s. That's a big red flag for the IRS.
For one fourth, I can tell you, I know there are counties out there that have been playing games for court reporters to try to keep them off the payroll as employees. Uh, and I think, I, I don't know the individual fact situations where counties have got popped. My bet is, though, there are places where when they got into it, it was clear what the county was doing. They're playing games and trying to work their way around IRS codes. Uh, if you do that, you're going to get popped. And I, that's why I think are the difference in the scenarios. And I, I'm like John, man, it's, it's, I don't know the answer. I got my feelings about this based on my training. Uh, I suspect, and I wouldn't want to hang my personal wallet on it, I suspect if we make the wrong call, the IRS would probably say, no, fix it. And that would be the end of the argument because they basically have what I would call a good faith clause in there. If you try to do the right thing, and you make the wrong call, they're not going to hammer you. But I think the situation, lawyers say bad facts make bad law. I think that's what's happened. There's been some bad facts out there where counties have tried to play the, play the game, and it's created a bad scenario. Then now they've come out and said, okay, you bunch of idiots, you got to do it this way. Here's the bright line because you're not smart enough to figure it out otherwise. And that's kind of where they're trying to put us.
Well, I just hate...
But the law's still the law.
I hate that we didn't have an opportunity to discuss it when we were setting up the court. This should have come out at that time and...
We, we did discuss it at, during the budget, and that's where...
But I mean, the idea of whether they're a, a 1099 or a W-2 employee.
If we had that in October, to at least kind of just put that in there already, and that would have been red set for January.
Well, and that's where we thought we had it settled as well, until this came up, um, on Wednesday. You know, I heard it from the court reporter, actually. We didn't get any notification about it, um, that it'd come back up again.
So he asked a question, would Wednesday work on that agenda?
Um, I, I, we have a court reporter who has already called to make sure she was getting her text today, um, the treasurer's office, because, you know, she was told the decision that we'd have it in the reports. Um, so I know that she would like it much quicker. She's, you know, counting on this to, uh, pay her bills. But, you know, I also understand you have to get the information together. I don't know, I guess the decision is whether we... We have three invoices she asked.
We already paid one. Let's pay these three, and if we need to fix it, then we're in good faith and we fix it. And I'll stand up and fight, argue with the IRS about it if they come in here and start raising hell.
Can we, if we pay it as an invoice and we find out we're run later, can you reverse it and do it as payroll? And pay it correctly?
I don't know who that question's directed to, but I have no idea. Mary Ann, what's the, what's the penalty? I, I liken it, at least in my brain, this short period of time that I've heard about this dispute, I liken it to the determination of whether someone's exempt or non-exempt. And in those cases, it's not necessarily a good faith attempt to make the call. If you make the wrong call, you may get hit for the amount of money that should have been paid as well as sanctioned. So I, I think we need to do our best. I certainly don't disagree with paying it. If it's already been paid that way for this year, I don't have a problem with, with paying it. We ought to make the best determination we can with the information that we have available to us. And I say us, I mean you folks. So you, you have to decide on your comfort level based upon the risk. That's why I want, this is what Mary Ann does, is not necessarily this particular issue, but this, uh, subject is what she does day in and day out. And you've heard very little, and the entity with whom she's with is the one that would cover part of the bill, I would hope, if we got popped for a sanction. So I would prefer that we, or that you all hear from her. And if you want to do that after some of this business is weeded out, then certainly do that, and you can do that today. And maybe that gives you an opportunity to read some of the material that you have in front of you, rather than setting it off for a week.
We can recess today and then come back this afternoon, right? If you don't adjourn today, if you recess to re-discuss this issue, we could come back
You bet.
later today.
I've got some time, I can sit and talk with Mary Ann a little bit myself. Maybe I can get some answers and clarification.
We can look at that other...
I do, at eight o'clock, I got, I got one minute.
Hey, Mary Ann, can you talk to Tuck right now?
Sure.
We'll go to another...
I bet you said, will you talk?
Okay, so we're going to...
One of the auditors, maybe?
We're just, we're going to move back to the order of the agenda. And those who have to get out for probate, we thank you for your attendance.
Thank you.
We'll go back on the agenda in order on consent agenda items three, four, five, six. And I don't see number seven on that. Okay. Is seven the line transfer? Yeah, okay. If I may, I do have a question on list of claims on the January 24, 18. And it's just a question. And I'm trying to find out where my question is. My question was on the fact that we had the county clerk's facility re-roofed, and it's a fourteen thousand dollar, paid seven? I thought that's where it was. Oh, they're stuck together. All right. Yeah. Uh, for fourteen thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars, my question is simple. Have we received the insurance money to cover this? Or have we paid this bill and we're going to receive the insurance money?
That, I'm not sure, had we received that money already.
Yes, sir. We have received, uh, for the outbuildings, we haven't received a full total for the courthouse because we're still waiting on our Q. But for the county clerk, um, we have received the full thing that we received.
Okay.
Was this hardly related damage that we...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just didn't want to make sure it wasn't disrupting our cash flow in the county.
No, sir.
Thank you.
We've been reimbursed by TAC?
Yes, ma'am.
But we are seeking FEMA?
We, um, FEMA will, is, for my side of the house, uh, David Lilly, our, for my side of the house, they are going to refund, uh, or David and I are working with FEMA. They, my side of the house with FEMA is just going to, um, replace, we're trying to get our deductible replaced, which is seven hundred and fifty dollars on my side, correct?
Yeah.
David? So we just use that for seven hundred and fifty dollars and my damage to help with the whole thing, correct? David, have I misspoken?
No, uh, the, the, I, I understand you're talking about the, uh, where we're at on the FEMA reimbursements on the courthouse and other buildings.
All they wanted to know is what I was going after. Um, and my part of that is just for my deductible.
Whatever the insurance doesn't cover, we're going to request FEMA to help us with, and we'll get ninety percent of that. And so if it's, let's say, a thousand dollars, it's a deductible, we'll get nine hundred back.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen, on consent agenda items three, four, five, and six.
I, I did have one that I was a little concerned about. Uh, on the, uh, budget item amendment, uh, number one, where we are increasing, um, the elected officials' salary that was waived. I was just wondering why we didn't, um, pull the remaining, what was remaining. We will have a remainder at the end, just a portion that we needed from, from unappropriated fund balance. We're pulling the entire nine, nine thousand, five sixty, one fifty?
Yes, the thirty-four hundred of it is coming from the portion waived line item. And then the other amount is coming from unappropriated.
And you're moving it into the salary line?
Yes. Now, I, I did not get a chance to speak with Jesse Murphy on this, but I'm thinking that her thought was, let's put the full amount in the line item so that it's there next year, and we don't forget to budget the full amount. However, it's noted that, or I've noted that, um, his increase will only be three hundred and sixty-seven point seven five per pay period since he started, not, uh, anything prior to that. So there will be a balance left in his, uh, salary line item at the end of the year.
Just want some clarity.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. We approve the consent agenda items three, four, five, and six.
Commissioner Husfeld? I'm sorry, Mary?
Seven and eight?
No, just three, four, five, six.
Okay, there's just not a number on seven.
All right, three, four, five, six, and seven.
Okay. Commissioner Walker, second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving to agenda item number eight. Commissioner Dobianski, consider and recognize the following employee for years of service. Commissioner Walker, you are here, and we have a token of our appreciation, so...
I thought it was going to be like our county attorney's. Ten years before I get it.
Back in August of, of this year, I approached, uh, our HR person, Lucy, and, and said that we need to, uh, recognize our employees for, uh, years of service here in the county. It's never been done before by recognizing them in some way. And we came up with the idea of giving them pins. Uh, we did a large number of those in October. Uh, we did, and, and from now on, we will do it whenever the anniversary date is. In December, Commissioner Walker and one other employee reached five years. Uh, she was out with her husband's illness at that time. Uh, we, uh, she missed a court date, I missed a court date. So here we are, five years and one month later.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Very good. Those are the fun things. All right, let's go to number, agenda item number nine. Uh, Grimes County Animal Shelter, 501(c). President Chairman Kristen Keely, are you present with us this morning?
She is not.
She is not?
We set this up, she had planned to be here. She was thinking that our court date was still in, on Tuesday. And, uh, she is in class this morning at San Houston State University.
Okay.
So she has sent me the update that she has given us. But I, I'm going, since we have some people who are interested in the animal shelter this morning, I want to kind of give you some background on how this process has, has come about. She started this project back in high school, uh, as an FFA project, and, and gotten some scholarships, I believe, uh, because of this project. Uh, she attended every, uh, meeting that we had in our strategic plan and pushed for this to happen. It's currently number six on, on the list, I believe, if I remember correctly. And, uh, we have been working on it for a little over three years because Judge Lamont and I actually met with her before we ever took office about this. She, she was adamant about getting this done, and she, she needs the credit for it. Uh, I kind of worked with her through that time, and she has a tremendous amount of information on that. She's done a lot of studying of animal shelters. Uh, we've visited, uh, animal shelters, we've talked to some contractors who have built them, and we have put a lot of time into this. Uh, we are at a point now that we are developing a 501(c) to operate the shelter. And the reason we're doing that is because of many of the restrictions if you go through other avenues of doing that. And we have a board of directors that are in place for the 501(c). We're currently working on that, on that application. And we have two of the board, board of directors here today. I'm going to give you the list of all of them. Kristen Keely, of course, is the president. Phil Bruins, Phil, if you will stand up, he are, just, uh, he's the, uh, secretary. Alex Sunstrom is the treasurer, he's not here. Yours truly is the vice president, and Dan Agon is a member at large. We will add to the board as we move forward with this project. But to, as we are getting it started, uh, we felt like it was better to work with a smaller group. And then once we get to the point that we need other people with other expertise on the board, then we will move forward with that. And at this point, I'm going to go ahead and read what Kristen has given us. "The current efforts to construct and support an animal shelter serving the residents of Grimes County are being made by a nonprofit organization which was established functionally specifically for the purpose of Grimes County Animal Rescue Incorporated. Currently, Grimes County Animal Rescue Incorporated is in the process of applying to the Internal Revenue Service to obtain a nonprofit status under Section 501(c)(3) of the Internal Revenue Code. After obtaining this status, Grimes County Animal Shelter Incorporated will actively begin fundraising efforts to construct an animal shelter. Grimes County Animal Rescue Incorporated is working closely with county officials on this project, with Commissioner David Dobianski serving as both board vice president and liaison between the board and the county. We are planning to construct a shelter that can house from thirty to fifty... We are planning to construct a shelter that can house from thirty to fifty animals. We will build, build it to accommodate expansion as a result of future growth within the county, and will be both practical and functional. The animal shelter will be constructed on the same property as the county jail, and will utilize labor of those incarcerated to help clean and maintain the facility in order to minimize cost and maximize sustainability. A Grimes County, a Grimes County citizen has agreed to contribute a large portion of the funds to construct this facility. We appreciate the support that we have received from everyone, and encourage those who would like to assist in the effort to reach out to us. And we will be giving you more information as we get that application filled out, and involving, involve each of you who are interested in this in raising the rest of the funds that you need to get this, get this accomplished. We're, we're very close to, to getting there."
Thank you for the update. Commissioners, any questions for Commissioner Dobianski?
When do you think it'll probably be operational?
We hope to try to get it done, I think, by the end of 2019, I believe is what we're, we're shooting for.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move on to item number ten. Mason Medical Transport Solutions, Keith Lofler. Mr. Lofler came in and made a presentation to Human Resources and to myself, and we invited him to come and share his information with the court this morning. Keith?
All right. Good morning, everybody. I've got some of these truffles. If anybody needs one, I'll be happy to hand to you guys.
Thank you.
I had to borrow one. But anyway, thanks for allowing me to come in and did with you guys about what this is, kind of who we are, how it works, that kind of stuff. But, you know, I like to start out by asking people, show of hands, who knows somebody that's ever been lifelighted? I use that as a generic term, air ambulance, or ground ambulance. Go ahead. Guys, you know, until you have a family member, a friend, or somebody that's ever gotten an air ambulance, you don't realize how expensive it is? It's about fifty, sixty, seventy grand. I've been with this company right at two years, a little over two years, and we did an enrollment with Industrial ISD. This lady held the title for a long time, ninety-four grand. A little bit after that, we did another enrollment. Gentlemen, he and his wife car wrecked, his wife got lifelighted, she didn't make it. He got a hundred thousand dollar bill. Insurance paid twenty-five thousand of the hundred thousand. So, not only did he lose his wife, he got a seventy-five thousand dollar bill. So, it's one of those deals that you don't think about till it happens, right? So, who are we? We got started in nineteen seventy-four, been around the block a little bit. So, on a global level, it's kind of a pretty neat story. Owner of a Masa, rich guy, used to go to the Caribbean a lot, has on airplane. Started seeing the need for repatriation back to the States. An American story, that's how it got started. So, on a global level. So, which is this one. So, that being said, how it works is, well, let me back up. There's two different programs. We have the Platinum Program, which is global, worldwide, and we have the Emergent Program. Obviously, the Platinum Program's gonna be the best bang for your buck. It covers everything, and I could give you all the details, but I'll spare you. But you have all the bullet points, but just highlight what it covers. It goes into, if you're a member with Masa and, and you're an Oregon donor, Oregon recipient, we take care of all that. If you're international somewhere, just pick a place, say, Argentina dove hunting, and something happens, say, the husband's there and the wife needs to come be there, we bring the spouse to you till you get all figured out, bring both of you back. You have kids there, pets there, vehicle there, bring all that back. The best slash worst part to this part is, in the event that you pass away, international somewhere, we bring the mortal remains back, and that is huge. A lot of red tape, crazy expensive. So, the Emergent is embedded in the Platinum, okay? The Emergent is domestic. The United States and Canada, Alaska and Hawaii are included, okay? So, if you're in California, does not matter if you get lifelighted or ground ambulance, we pay for the trip to the hospital versus international, pay for the trip to the hospital and back home from the hospital. So, anyway, so here's how it works. Is, say, say you have a car wreck and you have to get lifelighted to Houston, just say. What's gonna happen is, you're gonna get lifelighted, and I use that as a generic term, EHI, air evac, doesn't matter, get lifelighted. They're gonna bill your insurance. Your insurance is gonna pay about a fourth, give or take, right? So, once X amount has been paid, then you're gonna, about thirty days later, you'll get the remainder of the bill, the exclamation of benefits, EOB. Once you get that EOB, you pull out your Masa card, it's got your name, your account number, big eight-hundred number on the back, call Masa up and go, hey, I'm member number one, two, three, four. Here's your bill. You hand it off to Masa. At that point, you're out. No out-of-pocket, no deductible. So, the pricing on the Platinum is thirty-nine bucks a month, nineteen fifty a paycheck. The Emergent is nine dollars a month, four dollars fifty cents paycheck. But the good thing is, is as an employee, it covers you, your spouse or partner, and your dependents, twenty-six years old or younger, just like the regular ACA guidelines. So, just a little tidbit, usually the first question is, is there a limit? There is no limit. So, if you use this month and spouse uses it next month, slow down, be more careful. I get that a lot. So, just kind of a, kind of a little quick note to self. Just say you had a car wreck and ground ambulance picked you up, took you to the local hospital, wherever that may be. Uh-oh, this person's worse than I thought. We need to get him to a Level One, Level Two trauma center, say Houston. So, they bring in lifeline, take you to Houston. We're gonna pay for the ground and the air, because it's considered a higher level of care. If that makes sense. Anyway, so that's the program. I hope to get permission to bring it into the employees. We call them cities, counties, school districts, and businesses. We're B to B. Gosh, we've signed up Waller County, Wharton County, Jackson County, the Vaca County. There's, you know, school districts like crazy. We just been, been a little bit, so, anyway, so that's, any questions, anybody? Yes, sir.
We do have lifetime membership.
We used to, and we are getting rid of that, and don't ask me why, because, well, that's a great segue, and I'll bring this up to you guys. Starting, I think, February one, right in there, we're gonna bring in the Emergent Plus, okay? You guys, I introduced it to you, so we get to stay with the nine dollars. But the good thing is, on the Emergent Plus, we're, I think we're gonna enroll it first part of February. I'm actually going to corporate February the first to get the details on stuff. But what the Emergent Plus is going to be, it's everywhere we go, everybody says, well, you have repatriation on the Platinum, but no repatriation on the Emergent. I mean, we get it, get it, get it, so we wanted to appease the masses, right? So, when they roll out the Emergent Plus, that includes repatriation. Say you're in California, you don't have a loved one to pick you up or what have you, we'll bring you back home wherever that is. So, it, and the Emergent Plus will be fourteen dollars. It's five dollars more, but it's well-enhanced and stuff. And so, to answer your question, I don't think they're gonna continue the lifetime, but don't hold me to that.
And this is strictly voluntary on the basis of the employee?
It is not, it's not IRS 125 open enrollment, it's 155 voluntary, absolutely.
So, you can sell it to individuals also?
They do it, but here's the cool thing. They do it B to C, but if you go online, it's like seven hundred and twenty bucks. But if you want to extend it to, like a lot of people retire, or to their parents or what have you, we can offer the Platinum to those that are not true employees on payroll deduction. We can offer it to them for the group rate, which is four hundred and sixty-eight bucks a year, covers the entire family.
And there, there's not a limit to sign up? If only one person signs up, it, it's still the same as?
The one we're concerned?
Right.
Absolutely.
Okay.
We don't have that limit. That's usually a county thing.
So, spouse is a corporate?
Yes, it would be you as the employee, spouse or partner, and dependent, twenty-six or less.
Twenty-six or less.
Is there, is there a complication in payroll on the deductions? Plug it in and you're done with it?
And that, that's, you know, that's a cool thing is we, once we do an enrollment, we have the apps in hand, we do the Excel spreadsheet for the HR, turn the spreadsheet over to you where you have something to reconcile, and just start the process from there when someone gets terminated, leaves, or employees in order.
And that date you're having open enrollment is?
If y'all approve this, he will be here this afternoon.
Oh, it has to be approved.
It's not only?
It's not only?
No, it's, oh, it's not?
You just, it's present and discussed.
Opinion, Mr. Attorney?
Says, "Take action."
Standard practice is that if it's on the agenda as a number, and it doesn't say, "Take, take action," the court usually is limited in whether it takes action. The first top paragraph says, "Following items will be discussed and/or acted upon," but I, or it says, "and acted upon," but I never suggest the court rely upon that language. If it's on the agenda without action, I would suggest that you hold on. Could I, could I read a couple of things, though? I'm sure that you, you had an opportunity to look at this. Just want to be clear that it's got, it's got a renewal, automatic renewal. Court's usually reluctant to engage in a contract that has an automatic renewal. And then on the second page, oh, first paragraph, I guess I should say, at the top, "Employer agrees to offer and/or provide memberships to its employees via payroll deduction and/or employer funding." You're agreeing that you'll do one of those, at least one of those. If you go down to the one, two, three, fourth paragraph that starts, "Initial payment for this plan will be made by the employer." So, you're creating an obligation on the county is what you're doing. Just be sure that you recognize that. The employee may choose this, but the employer has the obligation to make the payment. Most importantly, I want you to look at the paragraph that says, "Membership benefits or requirements." You have to decide whether this is a good thing or a bad thing for employees. You would not want to subject them to something that may be a bad thing, and I'm not saying it is. I'm just saying that's your job. You wouldn't open, and I'm not saying this about this particular entity and what it is they're offering, but if you recognize that somebody was offering to employees something that was not a benefit to them, something that could be harmful to them, you wouldn't say, we're gonna let anybody come in and have the opportunity for deductions for any type of program. "Under membership benefits or requirements, the parties acknowledge and agree that the memberships offered by Masa were designed to protect members and their immediate families from the reasonable and customary out-of-pocket expense associated with emergency medical transportation following the primary insurer's reimbursement." First off the top of my head, I don't know what our primary reimbursement is. I don't know at this point what Blue Cross Blue Shield pays for transportation. But you read on, "Reasonable and customary expenses are determined on a case-by-case basis, considering a variety of factors, including but not limited to the primary insurer's determination of reasonable and customary expense." So, Masa is going to decide in its discretion whether it pays on a case-by-case basis and determine whether it's reasonable and customary, and one of the things they'll consider is what our Blue Cross Blue Shield said was reasonable and necessary. So, you need a reasonable and customary. The employee needs to know that before they sign up and begin to let somebody get into their check, they need to understand what this language says and what Masa is committing to. In my mind, I don't think you just turn the employee loose and say, here's your opportunity to get this. I think you, as a Commissioners' Court, looking out for your employees, say, you should say to your employees, I want to be sure, employees, you recognize that this is in there so that when you have lifeline, this is saying, Masa gets to determine on a case-by-case basis what's reasonable and customary. So, there's no guarantee, and I don't, I don't know this, this individual. There's no guarantee that what he's saying to you is what the employees will get. What they get is what's in writing. Then I would say, the next sentence says, the next paragraph says, "By offering and/or providing memberships to its employees, employer warrants and represents that it offers health insurance policies and plan options that provide a level of coverage for emergency ground and air transportation based upon reimbursement schedules that are consistent with other levels of coverage within the same policies and plan options, and that do not reasonably cap or otherwise limit reimbursement for emergency ground and air transportation." Essentially, what they're offering is supplemental insurance to what we have. I think before you all approve this and say to your employees, we're going to make this available to you, and then potentially employees say, yes, this sounds like a great idea, without having read the details or without knowing the details, I think you have, ought to have a clear understanding of what Blue Cross Blue Shield covers. And I haven't heard that today, and I don't know off the top of my head. And so, if you don't know what they cover, and let's say they cover everything. I mean, he, he may very well be right that they don't cover everything, but let's say if they do, why would you make this available to your employees to have ten dollars a month taken out of their paycheck, or thirty dollars a month taken out of their paycheck? So, it's not set for action, and I would say to you, consider that before you put it back on the, or, before you approve it when it shows back up on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I'd like to say in our defense, we just got this, and
I understand, I just got
see this, but
I just got, yes.
Just got it, and I just read it this morning.
Something else I would like to see is, could you give us a reference of someone who has had a, an incident?
Absolutely. I, like I said, I've been doing this right at a little over two years. I bet you, just my accounts, you know, an employee for whomever, shoot, I bet you I've had thirty-five or forty people turn in claims that have gotten paid. Perfect example, Stadium Belvedere. I signed them up two years ago. It's kind of a funny little story, but there was two librarian ladies. One lady in particular, her, she had a friend or somebody took a lifeline ride, forty-seven thousand. So, she's talking to the other librarian lady, well, she, shoot, if you think it's a good idea, she's got it. So, she did, and two months later, her husband had a heart attack, got lifelighted to Bryan College Station, and she called me up, she was kind of panicking, you know, what to do from here. So, I just told her, I said, wait a minute, Ms. Last, first off, is your husband at the hospital, is he okay? She goes, yeah, yeah, he's fine. And I'm like, good, because I'm not nine-one-one. But, so, long story short, she's actually calling me back, and I've had people call me and thank me for offering this to them, because it just, in her particular case, saved her thirty-five grand.
And I'm not saying these guys are doing anything wrong. You know that the insurance business is, they get in more money than they pay in claims, right?
Sure. It's like Las Vegas.
So, the question is, you ought, well, anytime you're getting insurance, you ought to be sure it is a claim that ever gets paid. I mean, that's the question.
Well, I think because, Keith, because our agenda items is present and discussed, we've had some discussion. Sounds like the Commissioners, myself, need to have a little bit more discussion with HR, and, and maybe even get an opinion from Tac on this, since she just came back into the room. At a later date, I know that there was a possibility we had, you scheduled
But we can reschedule.
We, we will. So, we will review this. We will contact you if we
If you need my legal team, the lady's name, I can get it to Ms. Pope or whomever. If you want to talk to Nicole, and she can, lawyer talk.
Sure. Thank you for your time this morning.
If there's gonna be, the, the contract that, or the policy that is gonna be signed by the employee, because I assume this is not it, this is for the agreement for the Commissioners to allow payroll deduction? If you have that agreement that the employee will actually sign, I'd be happy to look at it.
They, once we have that agreement, we don't technically have a contract for the employee to sign. We have a, just an application, enrollment application.
But how do they know what their coverage is?
I, I give them these brochures, and then once they enroll, they'll get a little service pack, the service dealer, and tells them what all it covers, and it spells it out.
If you could give me that.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thanks, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. All right. Moving right along to agenda item number eleven. Election Administrator Becky Duff, voter registration, elections administration, consider and take action to approve payment for Vanessa Brzezinski to attend County and District Clerks Association Winter Conference in San Marcos, Texas, February five, twenty eighteen through February eight, twenty eighteen. Good morning.
Good morning, Your Honor, Commissioners' Court, voters of Grimes County. And I'm here, I'm Rebecca Duff. I'm the election administrator, voter registrar for Grimes County, and I would like to ask the permission to send my employee, that's employee of Grimes County, to the county clerks, I believe it's called the Texas Association of Counties, County and District Clerks Association County and District Clerks Association Winter Conference. I have money in my budget to take Vanessa to seminars for elections and voter registration. She has had the good fortune of becoming the county clerk this coming January. So I'm asking to send her to the county clerk's conference. So there are some things in there on this conference that would be beneficial, not only to her to know what the county clerk's duties are, but also to help the county with, um, some of it is like, okay, the Microsoft and Adobe Outlook on Excel and things like that on the website that she already takes care of for the county, and does a pretty good job, I understand. And so, and then there's other ones too that would make her familiar with the, the fees and the guardianship and probate. These are things that, when she walks in the office in January, she will have some knowledge of what she's doing. Instead of going and sitting through elections in July with me, she would have this, afford this opportunity to have education on the new job she would have. So I, the monies, I believe, would be a total of about five hundred and fifty-eight dollars plus per diem. And I asked the county clerk about if he could pony up some of the money, and he said no. So I, I can have it out of my account. And I just thought this would be a good thing to do for her. So I'm asking commission to send her. Any questions?
So you say this is for elections and voters?
No, no, ma'am. I wouldn't be taking her to elections and voters. In July, I usually take her, and we have another class as well. And instead of paying for that and her sitting through another election class, which I think this class would be more beneficial for her, and that way she'd have some knowledge of when she stepped into the new office in January. And it's for the county clerk.
So you're saying instead of going in July with you.
Yes, ma'am.
You would suggest that she goes to this conference?
Yes, ma'am. And I, you know, this is nowhere, but I saw an employee's manual that I had to do this. I just thought this was a better thing, a better use of the taxpayers' money, on where it would be beneficial for her.
So this would come out of your budget?
Yes, sir.
I like. Otherwise, if she doesn't go, if she, if Ms. Duff decides not to send her, in all likelihood, what Vanessa could have gotten this year, she will probably try to get next year, and so she's going to pay next year regardless. To me, the faster that you can get folks up to Snuff, the, the better.
And you see no ramifications for her going this year further?
I, I think it's an excellent idea to do that, because I wished I could have gone six months before I took office.
Would it have been nice if all of you could have, you know, somehow done that?
Yes, it would. Is there a motion? Any questions?
I make the motion.
I second. And the motion is?
For to approve payment for Vanessa Brzezinski to attend the County and District Clerks Association Winter Conference in San Marcos, Texas, February fifth, two thousand and eighteen, through February eighth, two thousand and eighteen.
Okay. The motion's been made by Commissioner Walker, it's been, it's been seconded by Commissioner Dobieinsky. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number twelve, District Clerk Diane LaFlore, consider and take action to approve agreement to allow the Office of the Attorney General to install a secure wireless internet connection in the Grimes County Courthouse to allow them to conduct business when holding court in our courthouse. And we do have an attachment number twelve. Commissioner LaFlore here? She's not here today? Okay. She did submit the information, I guess, one of the bottom lines to the data that she put in, if I read it correctly, there's no financial obligation on our part.
That's correct. It's got a thirty-day termination, just thirty-day notice, and you can get out. They hold court for, it's often referred to as Plus Record or AG Court or Child Support Court. And if they need it, and it's going to be secured, and it's not going to impose on what we need, I don't see any reason that you all would want to object to it. But without hearing from Ms. LaFlore, or Mrs. LaFlore, any more, any other information, I don't know any more than what you have in front of me.
Sure. Mr. Peeler?
Yes. The only thing I need to see is how they're going to do that. Because if it changes the appearance of your courtroom, you're in violation with, that the Texas Historical Commission, and they'd have to file for a permit.
I would ask, if you're going to approve this today, make sure it's conditioned on Mr. Peeler's approval.
And I think that's certainly reasonable. This has been out since November, or no, I'm sorry. I don't know if I have a date of when it was initiated.
It said it was, it would be effective seventeen.
We're past, right. And that's because we had to cancel last.
So they have to fight with, and it also has been in the mind, which is.
We can scratch through that and get that taken care of. Does somebody want to make a motion on this with Mr. Foltz's consideration on Mr. Peeler?
I'll make a motion to, to approve the agreement to allow the Office of the Attorney General to install a insecure wireless internet connection in the Grimes County Courthouse, to allow them to conduct business when holding court in our courthouse. And this is contingent upon Mr. Peeler's approval of the installation of that equipment.
Good. I second the motion.
And the judge's act of signatory.
And they do have, that is correct, they do have a judge's signatory on this. Is that so, also a part of your motion, Commissioner?
It says our successor in his office. Well, it did, the appearance is, on item number A, our successor in his office.
But you just want to add that to the motion.
I was adding to my motion.
Gary, I just mean it so that all of you don't have to sign it. One person's signing. Whether it's, whether it's.
Make the county judge's signature.
Okay, thank you.
That might be.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Husfeld. Commissioner Walker has seconded the motion. Oh, you did? I'm sorry.
Sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Mr. Peeler, will you stay tuned on that with Ms. LaFlore?
Yes, sir, I will.
Thank you very much.
Do we have to say anything about the changing the date?
No, it, it's not even going to be effective. It will be effective back to that time, just meaning they have that approval, but they won't have that approval until Al says they do.
Okay.
Very good. All right. Do we need to revisit number thirteen?
Yes.
All right. I'm sorry, okay.
Was, Jesse, is she coming back? Do you have anything else to discuss? Jesse had to run and do something in the auditor's office.
Oh, yeah, we've got plenty to discuss, you want to.
Beneficial to, hold off until she gets.
All right. Mr. Walker, road and bridge?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
First item, the next three items, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, are kind of a package deal.
Yes, sir.
We were approached, you know, this fall by landowners on County Road two forty-two about the possible abandonment of the southern portion of that road. It's about a thousand feet of roadway. Mr. Shepherd, he's one of the lawyers in the back, Steve Wosnowski is the surveyor that has prepared these documents. The other man, Mr. Hockman, an accident last week during the ice storm, not able to be here. But basically, Mr. Shepherd and Mr. Hockman, as the attorney for his mother, own all the property on either side of the road. At the south end of the road, it's a dead end, there's not connected to anything else. We went through the county attorney's office, provided them the information on the proper procedure, requesting that the road be abandoned. They have performed posting notices on site and at the courthouse, provided the proper time period for the request. So today, they're asking the court, go ahead and take action on the abandonment of this portion of the road. As part of what we've discussed, we've asked them, if the road is abandoned, for the two property owners to provide dedications of additional right-of-way where we can create a circular turnaround at the end of the road and not just have a dead end where it's difficult for people to get there to turn around. And they have agreed to do that, and the survey documents and the deeds are there to convey that property if you approve the abandonment. So that's it. Entertaining questions, or if you'd like the applicants to speak, have them come up to.
And this is in which Commissioner's precinct?
Precinct four.
Commissioner Mallett, do you have any issues?
I guess it went through all the procedures, posted the signs.
Right.
Yes. And we, we did not receive any comments from any, you know, other citizens, prologue, I guess.
Well, if that's the case, I'd like to make a motion to approve the vacated portion of County Road two forty-two, namely, one thousand fifty point seven-seven linear feet of the southern end of such road.
I'll second. We have a motion by Commissioner Mallett and a second by Commissioner Husfeld. Need just further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, number fifteen. And as you said, Mr. Walker, this is all kind of a package deal, but.
Yeah.
All right, we'll take them one at a time, Doug.
These will be for the cul-de-sac turnaround, right?
Correct. And item fifteen is the portion from the Hockman track. Mr. Hockman was not able to be here today, he was one that slipped on the ice in the middle of the week. But there is a deed of dedication in the package where they would provide, you know, the semicircle on their side to the county so we can put in a proper turnaround.
I'd like to move to accept the right-of-way of dedication from Kathleen G. Hockman for zero point zero two six acres as presented.
My second motion. We have a motion, a motion made by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobieinsky on item number fifteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number sixteen, Mr. Walker?
Item sixteen is the companion parcel from the Shepherd's Track. Check and update that for the cul-de-sac.
I'll move to accept the right-of-way of dedication from William L. Shepherd and wife, Barbara Shepherd, for zero point zero two six acres as presented.
Okay. Second motion. Commissioner Mallett has made a motion. Commissioner Dobieinsky has seconded that motion, item number sixteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And I want to thank the citizens for their cooperation in this effort. Thank you very much. Mr. Walker, if you want to continue on with the road and bridge report?
Crew's been busy trying to do the things we can do in and around the weather we've had lately. Kind of focused on cover replacements and some of the bridge repairs and things that are a little less subject to the wet conditions. We have done, continued to haul material, we hope to get raw material that has been sporadic, depending on the weather and areas and whatnot. Trade-offs, been doing a lot of digouts, we've been real busy lately. Side ditch crew, the ditching machine has been concentrated on four oh six, four oh seven, four oh eight. They are up to seventy miles of ditches improved for the year. And that includes the, the machine has been down the last two weeks, grabbing replaced tires. And it turns out they're especially the item that's hard to get. We'll work on that, trying to find some old bridges, because especially items, they're all so expensive.
So you're in the four oh?
Four oh six, four oh seven, four twelve, that area. That's where they've been concentrated.
You're about four seventeen, why you in that area?
Elsewhere, we met with representatives of TMPA in Center Point, coordinate efforts on the restoration of County Road one seventy-one, up at the Gimms Creek Reservoir.
I'm sorry, I'd ask the audience to hold their conversation so we can hear. Thank you.
Center Point is going ahead and starting the restoration on TMPA's portion of that road. As soon as they're done, we'll go ahead and finish the restoration on our side. Everything will be taken care of at one point in time. And, and the good news is, Center Point is starting to get towards the end of their project. We're sort of seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, and we're starting to get some areas that are totally complete.
Thank you.
With the beginning of the restoration. Thank you. The, we've had some other meetings that would text up on the bridge replacement program. Basically completed the paperwork and received the advanced funding agreement for the future replacement of the, one of the bridges on County Road four oh six. Papers I brought you. Had a good meeting with the judge and the representative of Texton, kind of go with that whole bridge replacement program, and also got that paperwork signed at the same time. So the four oh six bridge has been approved. As soon as the sign, counter sign documents come back from Texton, that's official.
Good.
It won't get replaced for about five years because of the way their cycle works. But it is approved, and it'll be on the list as a future project. The other good thing, during the ice storm the other week, we only got one call. Calls about one spot on County Road three oh two, got a couple of calls about that. Having icy conditions, other than that, everything else fared pretty well, and a lot of folks stayed. Questions?
I understand y'all did a little repair work at the county fairgrounds driveways, I appreciate that.
We did, yeah. We put some millings on that main entrance at the drive, at the fairgrounds. They've requested some help on that, the department coming up this weekend. Glad to be able to take care of that.
Thank you and your crew for working through the, the tough conditions of last week. Thank you.
Mostly they got to stay home and stay warm.
Right. All right. Thank you, sir.
But thank you.
Item number seventeen, our county attorney, John C. Foltz, consider and take action to approve amendment to easement between Grimes County and the Texas Municipal Power Agency, and authorize the county judge's signatory. See attachments seventeen A, seventeen B, seventeen C, seventeen D, and seventeen E.
Judge and commissioners, I give a brief introduction about this item, but I want you to hear from TMPA's counsel, and he's here today. And he's made the presentation a couple of times, but you're new, and I don't know whether you heard it. Certainly didn't hear it from that side of the bench, and so I'd like for you to hear. They've asked, backed up how this began, TMPA is interested in selling their property. They sell to someone who doesn't have, isn't exempt from ad valorem's. It's a bunch of property that the county may receive tax dollars on. As you will recall, in the seventies, there was a big dispute between taxpayers of Grimes County and TMPA, because TMPA was created as an entity that had both eminent domain and an exemption from ad valorem's. There was an agreement struck where TMPA would make the payment in lieu of ad valorem taxes, but it was calculated on a formula using kilowatt generation. As their generation has gone down, the county's payment has gotten smaller and smaller. You have over a thousand acres, and I, they'd have to tell us how many acres they have at this point that are effectively off the tax rolls. If they sell the facility to someone who is, doesn't have the same exemption from ad valorem's, you're talking about a significant amount of ad valorem's that may come back to the county. to the county. It's all determined to be ag use. It won't be a ton, but if there are uses where folks in the future construct facilities, et cetera, there will be a tax base that will be created that doesn't exist today. So they have come to the county and said, we've recognized in identifying the lands that we claim ownership on, that there is an issue with drainage easement that we originally acquired.
Right.
And it appears that our railroad track and/or the support, the ballast maybe is in the drainage easement. We want to amend this so there's no question about where our track is or where our track is permitted to be. They asked the county to effectively amend the easement that they have to give them additional rights that they didn't already have because of, and let's just call it a mistake, having placed that in an area that shouldn't have been placed for whatever reason. I'm not laying blame, just saying that that's probably how it happened. We looked at the local government code provisions for the county being able to convey an easement and/or an interest in land. And there's provision that allows you to sell effectively to a neighboring landowner without having to go out for, without having an auction or bidding process, but it requires that you sell for no less than fair market value. In order to determine fair market value, you have to have an appraisal. Appraisal in this case costs a significant amount of money. I was funded by TMPA because they were desirous of getting this done. The appraisal, as I recall, indicates that the value of the additional rights would be $3,000. TMPA has offered to pay $10,000. So that's what we're here on at this moment is they're asking you to sign this amendment, this two-page amendment, to change the rights that they have in the particular areas identified. I met with Judge Lamont and Commissioner Mallett and Mr. Hawkins and their attorney, Murphy Hawkins, I think is one of the five people left out there at TMPA running around trying to keep the place going or whatever they're doing out there. But they're both here today, Mr. Hawkins and Carl Shahidi, who's their lawyer. If you all have questions, I want you to ask them, ask your questions of them. And it is their request, and I say this many times, I don't know that I've said it lately, Judge, just because somebody figures out a way to get something on the agenda, doesn't mean the court's obligated to approve it or even take action on it. You have to determine that it's in the best interest of the people of the county before you do that. This is a circumstance where TMPA is saying, would you help us out and change this because we recognize there's been a mistake? You could force them to toe the line and say, no, you're out a lot, tough. But there are significant benefits in TMPA selling the property as I've identified, I think. And also they're willing to pay the county for that, whatever, that error that was made some time ago. Just keep that in mind, just because somebody shows up with, here's a resolution I want you to approve, this is example, you don't have to approve calling January 24th Joe Fouth Day. I mean, just because somebody shows up with it, you don't have to do it. So.
That'd be my wife.
This is, this is TMPA asking for this, and I want them to come back to the podium and ask you for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
My question, I read through the appraisal report then, you're saying TMPA is offering...
$10,000 for what appears, according to the appraiser. Now, we chose the appraiser. They paid for it. The appraisers identified the value of $3,000.
Okay.
TMPA is offering $10,000, at least in the email I got from Carl, and he may, I assume he's going to say the same thing to that.
Yes. Your honor and commissioners, we've offered $10,000 for this amendment. You're giving us essentially two rights. One, to leave the track where it is. And secondly, if we need to go in and maintain the track, we can maintain the track and go into the easement area. After meeting with one of the commissioners, there was concern that we might reconfigure the track and take up additional space. So we put language in the easement to prohibit that. So this simply leaves it where it is.
And I said 3,000, 3608, Commissioner, you mentioned that number.
And yes, we do request that you consider this and take action on this. We're offering $10,000. And we think that covers the appraised value plus the work y'all did to work with us, which we appreciate.
And we ordered the appraisal?
We chose the appraiser, and I say we, I chose the appraiser. So I trust, I have confidence in the appraiser, but TMPA paid the cost of the appraisal.
Okay. And so with that being said, they were, they have valued the property at about, was it?
3,600.
3,600.
3,600. But I was looking at why the easement consideration was decreased by 75% because of, I guess, the use of it, the characteristics of it.
Well, the idea is, Commissioner, and I don't know all of the techniques of appraisers, but I know enough to know this. When you are getting an easement, and that's what TMPA is asking for, an amendment to increase the rights they have within the particular area. The area was limited in its use previously. They're expanding the use. So it's a further encumbrance upon our property. But the reality is, an easement is, it's a non-possessory right. Now, let's not argue about that, whatever that means. I mean, let's not talk about that. But in all reality, we keep the minerals, we keep all the rights that are not inconsistent with their use of the easement. In other words, geez, dare I open this Pandora's box. On a road, the county has an easement, but the landowners typically own to the center of the road beneath the easement. In all reality, it's not just beneath, it's also in the surface, but landowners can't use their property in a way that's inconsistent with the easement right of the county. This is the same exact thing. So what the appraiser has said is, the acquisition is 75% of the value of fee simple because it's not 100%. They're not getting fee simple. They're only getting rights. So they're saying it's a 75% damage essentially. So if somebody said, hey, I think this property's worth $10,000 an acre and I want an easement across it, this happens all the time in condemnation, $10,000 an acre and I'm going to take a full acre from you, but I'm only going to get an easement, so I'm only going to pay you 75% of that because you keep your minerals and all of the rights that are not consistent with the easement. So effectively, I'm only going to pay you 7,500. That's what that math is.
And that's what I want you to explain.
All right. Happy to do it.
Because my question is, you know, are, just being transparent in saying that, okay, you're talking for 14.43 acres, but I wanted you to speak to the depreciated value of it, so.
And they already have an easement? They don't have the rights that they're asking for now? And so it's a change in the burden to the property. We're not, effectively, we're not giving up anything, any more land.
Right.
Same area. We're just giving up, we're giving them the ability to put a track where drainage was supposed to be effectively.
And you have several easements there already?
Yeah, we have, their drainage easement is already there. Just turns out they put their track in the drainage easement. And they want to change the ability to, they want to change the easement to say they have the right to have the track and the supporting structures and do the maintenance of the track in a place that should have just been drainage.
And this was just discovered after you actually did a survey in order to sell the land. It's when this was found, as they approached this to correctify it.
And now on the actual amendment to the easement, under the agreements, it says in consideration for some of $10 or the $10,000, I mean, I don't quite understand that.
People put that in deeds all the time. It's one you don't want to tell the world what you paid for, although we're kind of telling the world on a camera every day what they paid for. We got to be open. Anybody who wanted to request a copy of the check that got paid, et cetera, this is just general language. What it does is it cements the agreement. Without consideration, a contract is not binding. And when a contract reflects that consideration was paid and received, then if anybody ever disputed in the future whether money was paid, you go to what's called, it's called the four corners rule, and you see that there's a recitation of consideration, and you typically can't contest whether money got paid. So you put something in there to reflect that money was paid. The other good and valuable consideration, that's the $9,000 and whatever, $990.
I guess what I was getting at, there's already an over, it says an overhead transmission easement there, easement there too.
I don't know.
Transmission line easement.
Is that right, Carl?
I believe so.
That's true.
Are there any other questions?
I would just like their whole commitment that they will sell to someone who is not ad valorem exempt, all right? If I get that.
You're trying to get me killed.
All right, all right.
If there's no discussion, I move to approve the amendment to easement between Grimes County and the Texas Municipal Power Agency and authorize the county judge's signatory.
My second motion. There is a motion being made by Commissioner Mallett, item number 17, to approve the amendment to the easement between Grimes County and the Texas Municipal Power Agency. We all know that is TMPA. There's a second to the motion by Commissioner Dobianski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
The only thing that bothered me on this was it says the state of Texas will be 45 million people by 2060. I'd be dead and gone, that's an awful lot of people.
46.
All right. Moving right along, are we now ready to go back to item number 13? All of the parties present who have been sharing and discussing?
With the exception of Judge McCann, who is in court, but asked that I remain on his team.
Okay. To remind the court, we're on agenda item number 13, County Court of Law, review and consider and take action to designate visiting court reporters and visiting judges, so it's two, as either independent contractors or employees. So far, discussion has pretty much been around court reporters.
Yes.
Okay? You want to pick it up where we left off?
So based on our conversation, we've come to the determination that it is looking at this point like independent contractor, that we should pay the invoices as they are, do some further investigation, you know, just to determine that we are considering this in the correct manner and, you know, revisit it at that time if needed.
In fact, based on the county court of law judge's description of how she does the work, how she brings her equipment in, how she does everything, total control, total everything. And all I said back there was, I would like to see some of the letters and look into the specific situations in counties as to why the IRS rules what they did in those specific counties. It could be because of W2 was issued at the same time as the 1099. It could be that that was the only court reporter that was always with that judge, always doing the work, and they were 1099-ing that person, and they really looked and smelled like an employee. I just don't know. But I have seen those letters. I'd like to do some more investigation, but because you already paid one, it would be real harmful to switch course right now. I would just go forth, and then if you decide in the future to change and treat this person as an employee, then the homework needs to be done. How do we do that? How do we fix this? How do we make that person whole with retirement and all that good stuff? And do we do it from January 1, IRS year, or we go to your budget year and things of that nature? So that's where I sit right now with this.
Okay.
Based on his description of what she does and everything. Okay?
Sure.
Did y'all, did y'all address anything on visiting judges at all?
No, we didn't.
They're all in the same category.
And we have no control. I mean, I would call a court reporter for her.
That's true.
But she sets her own schedule, you know, she reserves the courtroom, she sends out her own notices, she is at her own control throughout the entire, through the entire case, from the point that it's assigned. She only comes in and utilizes the courtroom, that's...
The visiting judges we did not discuss, but I do know that that has been a big one for the IRS. So what is your...
Well, the IRS says that, yeah, they should be as an employee, but you don't always have the same visiting judge.
Yeah.
Right. So that's a part of...
We should probably let the county attorney handle that.
Exactly. And look at, and look at what the IRS has done in the past with other counties and why.
Well, I would feel, just off the top of my head, I would feel like we would have a much better argument on the lack of control of a judge.
Sure.
Than we do of a court reporter. The court reporter, you know what to expect. The judge, you expect him to sit in a spot. You don't know what he's going to do after he does that, you know? I mean, so to say, we have control, he's controlled by the law, he controlled by his docket and the number of, or she's controlled by the number of cases that show up. That person uses their discretion and determinations that are made all the time. Litigants claim that people, the judge abused the discretion or made the wrong decision all the time. How in the heck can we say the county has any control over what the judge does? It seems to me that's a stretch. But if the IRS is saying there's an issue there, I mean, it's always something to look at. You've got to worry about the person that's going to make the determination that's going to cost you a sanction later. Not necessarily my gut on it, but my gut is, it'd be easier to claim a judge is an independent contractor than a court reporter.
But it's the current opinion of the discussion, we're going to treat court reporters as independent contractors. Is that my understanding?
For the time being.
I understand.
Do there need to be a motion for that to...
As it said, I think, I think that what's happening here is, the auditor's office wants to know that the commissioner's court has made this determination on purpose and not, we just did it accidentally. So if you're, if you ever are going to make something, a determination on purpose, then you got to take action to do it. You can't say, feels like what we want to do, and then move on down the road. You want minutes to reflect, you took action as a group that said, we want to do it. That way Mary can blame y'all when we have to pay a sanction.
And that's why we have to take action, but...
And I would assume that this court reporter that you're speaking of desires to be an independent contractor, not a full-time employee at your beck and call.
Yes.
Well, a part of that, Commissioner, would be our concern as what we want her to be also, because if we do make her a full-time employee, then it's going to naturally...
Then we'll take when and where she works and when, you know?
Well, right, but it also ramps up the price of doing business with the individual.
Yes.
So.
Possibly. But what the commissioner is making, the point he's making is, she then automatically, assuming the elected official buys into the personnel policy, she's now subject to the personnel policy as an employee, which she's not before. She, in my mind, as Tuck said when he was here, my gut is to say, it sure sounds like an independent, it's like you have some guy, if somebody comes and mows your grass, you typically pay them as an independent contractor. They don't become an employee. You tell them what grass to mow, and they get it done. It's the same thing you're doing here. And that sounds like it's consistent with what we get from a court reporter, and I would have thought there wouldn't have been that big a struggle. But if the IRS has said that there is, then it's up to you to seriously consider that. If you've let Mary Ann consider it, then it's been seriously considered.
Oh. Well, and just, you know, as, as another point in this, she works for three other counties as a court reporter that, she works for the AG, basically, she does, she does the AG court reporting in three other counties. And all three of those other counties also consider her an independent contractor and pay her accordingly. You know, she gets a 1099, paid off of invoice for that. She's not, we utilize her as our first option, but there is probably once a week, if not twice a week, that I have to bring somebody else in.
Okay.
We also would like, I'm sorry, this thing keeps going off. We also, you know, have, as the judge said, we do wish that we would have an official court reporter in the next budget year to, you know, offset that, which would also allow us to collect the official court reporter fee on every case, you know, and have that benefit of having somebody here full-time. But at this point, we just don't, we don't have that benefit or the budget to manage that.
Right. And I would say, the person who begins to prepare the budget in June or July will have to do an analysis of how much we've spent on court reporter by contract. Take that number, figure out what the load would be, and determine whether or not it's appropriate to have somebody else staffed with it.
Agreed. Any other discussion? I'll make a motion then that we take action to designate visiting court reporters, court reporters as independent contractors versus employees, and we will look further... reporters as independent contractors versus employees, and we will look further into both that and visiting judges, but for the time being, we will, the motion is to consider and take action to designate visiting court reporters as independent contractors.
I second the motion.
County judge has made a motion, it's been seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for your comments and input.
Thank you, Mr. Duggan.
We will now go to County Treasurer, County Auditor, number eighteen, consider and take action on a purchasing policy and procedures manual. We do have an attachment eighteen, we've seen that before. Just to give the commissioners a little bit of update on, on what I have found out or what I have, my research has shared on this, and we don't have, Toledo's up today.
She's in a conference.
She's in a conference, and our treasurer, Janice Trent, is not here. But I did ask, because there was a committee that was put together in the beginning when this review started, and I'm not sure when that was, but there were a total of fourteen county employees. We had three people from the treasurer's department, we had one person from the auditor's department, we had someone from the tax assessor collector, we had two people from Roden Bridge, we had four people from the sheriff's office, one from juvenile probation, and one from voters. So, there was a fairly large representation of county departments, not that it was a hundred percent of all county departments, but there were fourteen people on the original committee as this came together. I've had feedback, both pro and con, on this activity, I've had five visits, I've had two calls, I've had one email, and I can't put my, I can't put my finger on the email, but I know I had one and read it, of people expressing concerns about having a purchasing policies and procedures manual. On the flip side, I have had people saying, this is something that's very much needed within the county, and I'm...
If we don't have it, we're in violation of any grants, and we could stop receiving grants.
I haven't seen that.
That's, that's one of the things, we, we need to have a purchasing policy in place, and we would like to have it before the outside auditors come. Because if we don't have a purchasing policy, we're not going to be able to continue to get grants, because they're going to, they're going to be asking for our purchasing policy, and if we don't have something to give them, they're going to say, sorry, you don't get the grant.
Okay. So, we could have a purchasing policy, it doesn't necessarily have to be the one that's in front of us, but this is the one that the committee has indeed put together?
Correct.
And...
And it may, it may need some more tweaking.
Okay.
But we would like to see it get in place, and then we can continue to do the tweaking.
And counsel I have received from our county attorney, and I cherish this counsel very much, he has made the decision that, or he has told me that we, as a court, we can make a decision, and if we need to modify or amend some of the practices and procedures down the road, we can. The question is, do we pass it today? Do we table it today? Do we not pass it and hold a workshop? Has there been enough discussion? Not enough discussion? I open the discussion to the commissioners.
My only question I've got, if we have a maintenance issue with some of the buildings, and we have a contractor come in and make repairs, and it says in the aggregate of fifty thousand dollars in a twelve-month period, what if those repairs go over that fifty thousand?
Well, we got a problem.
Well, if it should be individual, you're talking about probably individual projects, you have one in a twenty, one in a...
Well, but that's not the way the government... But Toledo said there are some exemptions for building maintenance and a couple of other things. She told me there were exemptions that allow you to go over that limit.
Because that's really not a sequential purchase or separate purchase that add up to, you know, if it goes to separate projects, where you, it should be a separate project for a fifty thousand dollar limit. Is that what, the way you see it?
Right, and I, my understanding is, they've tried to include what the law is, and we have faced that, we've crossed that bridge multiple times about when we're up to the fifty thousand dollar threshold, and if and when we get there, we'll figure it out. And, end of the day, what the legislature wants you to do is not make an effort to spend over fifty thousand dollars without going out for bids on a particular individual for a particular project. If you're not attempting to subvert the legislature and not get away with something, many times we're put in a situation where it's something that needs to be done, there is a discretionary exemption, or at least I can come up with interpretation that makes me happy that we're not in violation of the law. We'll do that when and if we have to in the future, but I think what they tried to include here was just what the law is. I don't think they tried to change the law, as far as that issue.
So, does it have to read the county as a whole?
What's that?
It says the county as a whole, if costs exceed fifty thousand.
Well, just the twelve-month, the twelve-month period, I think that would be the...
Well, that's all part of the law. They try to oversight what the law is.
Or aggregate.
But I don't, I don't know if you answered my question and his question, because he's asking twelve months, and I'm asking...
Both of us, yes, because I'll say yes.[997.04][997.04](laughter) It is the county as a whole, and it is one year. And so, that's, the question is, what they're, what that's hitting upon is, if we want to have this discussion, I mean, let's just either have it today, or you put it on a workshop. I know Toledo wanted to get it done before the first of the year for fear that we might lose grants or lose the opportunity for grants. This is your policy, other than the things that are dictated by the law, and, and that's why, one of the things I think we're talking about, this is totally discretionary with you, and you can say, I like it or I don't like it, it's patterned off of another county with the input of those fourteen folks. I know there are some people that don't like the, what's contemplated in here, I think, to me, it sounds almost like the abatement policy that you adopt every two years, it's subject to refinement when you see that there's a problem. You may not be able to appreciate every problem that's going to exist, and so you just have to wait till you see one, and then you can change your own policy if you want to, but if there are real concerns on this particular issue, let's think it through and let's talk it through, and it doesn't have to be approved as that.
Well, if there are known expenditures or known remodeling or something that you know is going to take place from different, even different budgets, but it might be the one contractor, and that's, you would go out for bid for something like that.
That's, right, that's exactly what we do already, that's right. That's, if you foresee that it's something that you're going to spend over fifty thousand dollars on, go out for bus, now go out for bid.
But if, you know, something comes up, or you don't, don't foresee, you haven't budgeted for it or anything like that, you know, you have a project, you know, AC system goes out, because those are part of the most expensive thing, goes out in different buildings, those are separate projects.
And there's a discretionary exemption for things that are emergencies, potentially to protect or preserve property or life, there, again, across that...
That's a legal thing, and it doesn't have to be in this.
Doesn't have to be, that's exactly right. It could say, follow the law. It could say, when it comes to bidding, we'll follow the law, period, done, if you wanted to.
Well, one of my concerns was the purchasing agent. If, if, if the auditor's department is already strained as to Toledo doing the auditing, and then she becomes the purchasing agent, we're looking at maybe possibly having to hire somebody else to take on some of those responsibilities, which we probably should have discussed during the budget hearings, if we were considering doing a separate purchasing agent, because...
There's not really a big difference on the, it says on page seven, each department head or elected official is responsible for following the purchasing policy, policy to secure goods or services. Above it, it says the county auditor's office shall oversee all purchases of supplies. We already do that. We do that through the account payable process. Every single invoice in the county has to be approved by the auditor's office. All large purchases over fifty thousand, we assist with the bidding process. We already do those things.
Well, they were concerned about the wording of like office supplies, like pencils, I'm trying to get back to me.
Those are not, they overfire one quote, and it could be just the one from where they end up getting the stuff. For bigger purchases, the only thing that this will emphasize that currently doesn't get done very faithfully is, or consistently, is larger purchases above a thousand dollars, five thousand dollars, where they're, it's requiring two quotes, and so it's just a little, you know, a little bit more work on the department head. We can assist with that process, which is things that we already do for the most part.
But also, if we had a purchasing agent, which is different from a purchasing clerk, we had a purchasing agent, it would be part of their job description to go out and find the best price on office supplies, and everybody in the county would need to use that person, that office...
That's with the purchasing what now?
That's with the purchasing agent.
Agent.
We could do it with a purchasing clerk, but it, there's more responsibility put on the agent, and they are required to have more training, they have to be licensed as an agent. That makes a big distinguish, distinguishing difference between a purchasing clerk and a purchasing agent.
Okay, but we're talking about a purchasing agent?
I would just say to you that, my understanding from various seminars, and I haven't really looked into a lot, but bigger counties go to purchasing agents where one office is in charge of getting all the paper and all the pencils and all whatever, you know, the supplies, and you, as a department, go to them to get the stuff, because they leverage the buying power of the entire county. But most small counties don't do that, and they do it the way that we continue to do it. So, I think what's, maybe, maybe I'm wrong, I think what they're asking to do is keep it the way that it is, and have their office continue to do the things the way that they've done. I don't know that there's a big change as far as purchasing goes on a, on a daily basis.
Is that what you're asking? Because I heard from you, you talked about T becoming a purchasing agent.
She is interested in doing that for the county, because then we could have a better overall, uh...
But this is not...
Continuity.
This is not...
Yeah, this is not asking for that, but that would give us a better continuity across the board.
You're saying it's not asking for that, but I thought I read in here where it says that we go to the purchasing agent.
This is required by the Act, as auditor's office of the county...
Where there has not been a purchasing agent appointed, then the responsibility falls on the auditor's office in certain size of counties, is what she's saying.
Oh, yeah, the first is talking about the law, right?
Okay. Michelle?
Just as far as the purchasing agent, if we are going to have a purchasing agent, we don't meet the population requirement to automatically have it fall under the auditor's office, so there actually has to be a board that's formed, and that the statutes determine who needs to be on that board, and they're actually the one who determines and hires who should be the purchasing agent, if you get to that purchasing agent stage. I have...
Well, my, my issue, I'm sorry, but my, my issue with a purchasing agent, they're not necessarily the subject matter expert in the areas of what they're purchasing for, and sometimes they might be just, you know, purchasing on availability or price, and unless they have all of the information in front of them, they could very well make the best buy for the county, but it doesn't really give us the quality of what we need. Mr. Beal?
I have an example of that. When I started just about three years ago, we were using several different people as our boiler-chiller people, several people for electrical and air conditioning needs, and the problem arises, if we don't have that same person, and not necessarily that it's an emergency, I plan out, I know which unit's going out, which I can, if I have to put all that to bid, and I have to take, say, the lowest, or the purchasing agent thinks I need to take the lowest, then when I do need the person that understands the systems and what we have here, the vendor will say, well, I missed out on that, why should I take this one? And then I'm in a very big lurch. Right now, I have vendors that are climate tech, we can't get away from them, because they're proprietary equipment, we have to buy it through them. I also have found that a new agent for the boiler and chiller system that has, did everything that four other people said they couldn't do without us taking the roof off the courthouse. So, when you throw maintenance in there, I, I agree with the purchasing thing, but when you throw maintenance in there and you require me to hold by them standards, it puts me in a very big lurch of who I can, when I can, and how I can.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to tie into that from previous experience, you know, being overall in the building maintenance issues, when you come to these types of things, you have contractors, it's a small community, so you use some of the same contractors to do jobs throughout the entire county. Who's going to track that? Who's going to be the one, because I'm not going to know what this particular person did at the Nevisota Annex, that they also worked at the jail, that they also did something, you know, for us in one of our buildings, well, several of our buildings, you know, here in the county central, and we also hired during the budget process to build Marissa's buildings for the dump sites. So, when you have all of that going, and it's not a project basis, what do you go out for bid for? Do you go out for bid for the rails that we put on the county clerk? Or do you go out for bid for the buildings that I believe are already started, because we did that, you know, during the last budget cycle? Or do you go out for bid for the door that he fixed? Or, you know, there are all these multiple little items, who's going to be able to check that and know what's already been out, what's been started, not just paid for, but, you know, you're going to have projects that are out there, even when you check, that you don't know the other person has already decided to get a quote and, and move forward with.
I think as long as we follow the law, but not necessar, you know, and it, and...
He spoke to it a while ago.
He spoke to it a while ago, that, that there is something to keep us from having to worry about that.
Right.
But it does, you know, just, I guess we want to emphasize that in the policy as well, that, hey, you know, there's some instances where that aggregate can be above fifty thousand dollars and not have to go for bid.
Right, and we've interpreted it, you know, through the statutes, you know, it, it's pretty clear in there, and that's the way that we have been following it. The other thing that I have concern with is on the bid process, is it says that we will go with the lowest bid, not the lowest in best, which is of high concern, especially when you're looking at maintenance in some other areas. You really want to watch that language, in my opinion, so that you have the opportunity...
We say lowest qualify, lowest qualify.
Exactly, and, and we had a lot of those circumstances that would come up, especially with building maintenance. The courthouse repairs, for instance, would be a big one, because you can have somebody come in and hire a consultant that has the experience, but they don't themselves have the experience, but they pass the request for qualifications criteria that we have out there, different things like that.
Thank you. Well, one, one thing I will say on the fourteen people that were involved in the collective discussion, there was not a commissioner or a judge involved in that. Is it of the opinion we need to table this, have a workshop? And then, John C., can, procedurally, could we have a workshop and then schedule a commissioner's court meeting to follow that workshop to take action?
Sure, the term workshop is not in the government code. We use that to tell ourselves that we expect maybe a roundtable to make an appearance and people to be discussing ideas, and likely that there'll be no action. There's no requirement of that by the law, that's just what we call a workshop.
Okay.
You can do whatever you want to, you can call it a meeting, you can call it a get-together, you can call it a gathering, you can call it whatever term you want.
I'll stick with workshop.
You, you can certainly call it, but this is a policy decision for the court to make.
Right.
You want to call it a workshop at eight o'clock and have a regular meeting at nine o'clock, you can certainly do it.
Or can we establish that meeting to convene when the workshop adjourns?
You need to put a time in there, and so that people know when to show up, notice to the public.
Okay.
So, I put a time in there, but again, you could put, you could put on one agenda, we're going to have this item, and no action will be taken, and number two is... we're gonna have this item and no action will be taken, and number two is, action will be taken.
Oh, okay.
You don't have, you don't have to have two agendas.
All right.
You can call one a workshop unless it, for some reason, makes you feel more comfortable.
No, I just, no, I just wanted to be procedurally correct.
It can be a special meeting, just like anyhow, yeah.
They can be one agenda and number one is to discuss and number two is to do something about it, or number one could say discuss and do something about it.
Okay.
Well, the thing is, we've kinda pushed this quite often, uh, already, I mean, I think.
But I think it's something that although we have fourteen members and I'm sure they, they tried to look at every scenario, but you have other people who, who, like you said, um, there was no member from the court, there are still some examples coming up. And if you're gonna hold employees to the, to it, I think we should beat it to death as much as possible so that we're not constantly tweaking and, you know, just get it done and opt it.
It's almost dead, Commissioner, so I, I think we can have.
It was all just the agenda still. Yeah, we can have another barrier.
Is there a motion? If not, I'll play your hot. Who had the questions?
I know, uh, I was, I was actually in one of the meetings we had, there were several concerns that brought up.
Yes, sir.
That actually, that we have concerns from our department that is, was never corrected and not addressed in here. There's still a couple of things that need to be worked out.
Okay.
Um, and there's, you know, just particular, you know, just one example, they're saying that there's a violation, employee bought something, didn't turn a receipt down in a timely manner, doesn't state how long that they could take action to make that employee pay for this article, but, you know, I have a kinda issue with that. I got an employee at midnight, runs out of gas, can't make it back here to Anderson and has to buy gas, which, that, that brings in a whole nother thing with the Attorney's Office trying to pull our credit cards from us and.
Sure.
Uh, from every employee and it's, there, there's still some issues that need to be addressed and I think maybe instead of just having a meeting with them, at least having some of the court members there and the workshop there, that way we can address our concerns, they actually get, uh, identify and say, well, we're just not gonna do that and it's not put in there, you know? So I think still some stuff that needs to be addressed, you know, we, we were there at the meeting, we necessarily don't agree with everything, you know, and I think some things need to be tweaked and worked out before we report.
Thank you for your comments.
And I, and now, if I understood Ms. Trent, when I talked to her, the credit com, com data, is that?
Com data.
Card was, was a great concern on the purchasing.
Well, that's because on the com data card, when you buy your gas, the taxes are taken off of it, we don't pay the taxes on it. When they go and they use their Visa card to buy gas at the gas station, we're paying all the taxes.
But then you, then you still have those departments that don't even have that type of card, that purchase gas and.
But we could, com data, we could offer it to every office that has vehicles, just like we do the, the Visa credit card.
And I think a workshop.
Every individual, every individual or every office?
Well, every individual that has a vehicle, yes, you know?
I think a workshop would also give some explanation as to what you're, you're actually talking about in that policy so that there's clear, um, definition of what you mean, you know? Cause it could be construed as something else, I don't, you know?
Could maintenance be represented in the workshop since we weren't the last time?
Well, a workshop wouldn't make it available to you.
Perfect.
Well.
All right, Commissioner Walker, you wanna?
Is there a particular day? We just wanna do it maybe after our special meeting next Wednesday and actually have a.
I don't have a problem with that.
We can make it kind of last item on the agenda and then take action. All right. So is there a motion?
Uh, I make the motion that we table the item until the next special, uh, court meeting.
Okay. There is, is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Walker has made a motion that we table item number eighteen until the next Commissioner's Court meeting, which would be next Wednesday. Commissioner Husfeld has seconded that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, it's tabled to next Wednesday. All right. Number nineteen, consider and take action regarding the burn ban unauthorized the county judge's signatory. I haven't had any calls from any of the chiefs. Mr. Lilly, have you had any information?
I've not heard anything from any of the chiefs on it, uh, but, and usually they will reach out to me or to your office if they do give their needs.
I know the humidity's a little lower, which is nice, but, and that's also.
Actually, the, uh, the current, uh, burn threat level is probably closer to yellow. Usually it's green, low, uh, I would say it's closer to yellow moderate because of the higher number of grass fires that are occurring.
Yeah.
For instance, uh, Chief, uh, uh, with Richards, uh, he was here for the meeting, but he had to leave because of a grass fire.
Right.
Close to Richards, so I would say it's probably closer to moderate, but not high enough to merit a burn ban at this time.
All right. Then we'll take no action on number nineteen at this time. Number twenty, receive updates on the strategic plan, anybody have anything to offer on that? Nope? Okay, I am gonna, uh, I do like the advice that the county attorney shared, I think, last meeting where we'll take some specific items and start hitting those and I think the value of that, those that we feel complete, we can take them then off the list and focus our attention.
Okay.
Okay? If that's agreeable?
Yeah.
All right. Twenty-one, discuss and take action to approve interlocal agreement for maintenance of roads, law enforcement, and nine-one-one services for the city of Planterville, Plantersville, attachment number twenty-one.
Commissioners, this is the standard agreement that you have with other municipalities in the county. I would point out that you certainly wanna be sure that the sheriff's office is okay with law enforcement, that your nine-one-one office is okay with providing those services, that your road and bridge department is okay with road maintenance. The contract term is five years, it's supposed to be reviewed annually and either party can terminate on thirty days' notice.
And you've reviewed it, as you said, it's our standard?
It is, it's the one that's in place for the other, uh, small municipalities.
Chief Green said that he's okay with it.
Okay, and you got the road and bridge guy there, and the, the usual agreement for road and bridges, it's at the discretion of road and bridge as to whether they offer some assistance, but, uh, usually there'll be a separate agreement to do that if there's going to be some.
Correct.
Your thoughts on it, Mr. Walker?
As long as it follows the standard that we're used with the other communities, I have no objection.
All right, and again, if, if there's a problem with it, it has a thirty day termination, you just say we're out. Somebody's affecting too much. Uh, nine-one-one's here, you wanna ask about nine-one-one?
Are we okay, Cat?
It's great.
Okay.
Also, we have, we have agreement with the city of B-D-I-S for, uh, waste management?
Uh, we have agreed with city of B-D-I-S for Ms. Hale to go into the city, yeah, and, uh, I don't remember what that deal was, but it was different than this, uh, they were paying us something for inspections or something?
About two hundred dollars per complaint.
Yeah, I haven't gotten that request from Planterville.
Well, I, I think it will, I'm pretty sure it will be forthcoming and I'm gonna visit with the city council there in Plantersville on that, because Marissa and I have already addressed some issues down there, uh, last year when she first came aboard.
Okay, and I was gonna say, you make sure that your department, your one man department can swing Plantersville also.
Okay.
Why anybody would go into that line of work, I have no clue, but God bless.
And Mayor Hale called this morning, she was left with a dead battery, so she was gonna make it if she could, but I guess she hasn't been able to. Any further discussion? You wanna start us off, Commissioner, in your precinct?
Yes. I move that we approve the interlocal agreement for maintenance of roads, law enforcement, and nine-one-one services for the city of Plantersville.
I second it.
And authorize the county judge's signatory?
Yes.
And Commissioner Walker, you seconded that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Dobianski on item number twenty-one, it has been seconded by Commissioner Walker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, number twenty-two. Consider and take action to appoint county judge Joe Fow to replace Ben Lamont as the Grimes County representing member of the BV, BV cog board of directors. I was requ- I, I attended my first BV cog meeting, um, this month and they asked me to go through the process of having Judge Lamont's name removed from that and my name replaced.
Well, I make the motion that we, um, appoint Grimes County Judge Joe Fow to replace Ben Lamont as the Grimes County, as Grimes County representing member on the BV cog board of directors.
I'll second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Walker, a second by Commissioner Husfeld on item number twenty-one, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item twenty-two, yes. All opposed? All right. Item number twenty-two, considering, I'm sorry, item twenty-three, consider and confirm Sheriff Don Sal's reappointment to the Mental Health, Mental Retardation Authority of Brazos Valley, acronym M-H-M-R-A-B-V, whose current term expires February twenty-eighth, twenty-eighteen, with a new two-year term extending from March one, twenty-eighteen through February twenty-nine, twenty-twenty. This is in compliance with SB one-one-two and we have an attachment twenty-three. Have to, I have talked to Sheriff Sal and he is in agreement, if we're in agreement.
With that being said, I'd like to, um, confirm Sheriff Don Sal's reappointment to the Mental Health, Mental Retardation Authority of Brazos Valley, whose current term expires February twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, with new two-year term extending from March first, two thousand and eighteen, through February twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty. This is for the compliance of SB one-one-two.
I second the motion.
There's excitement, there's excitement in the crowd over that motion. I, I always wanted to say this, order in the court. We have a motion on the floor, item number twenty-three, uh, Commissioner Walker has made the motion, Commissioner Dobianski has seconded the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, five oh. Item number twenty-four, discuss policy procedures regarding closing county offices due to the inclement weather or emergency. I asked for this to be on the agenda because I experienced my first county shutdown last Tuesday and Wednesday, and I did feel I had the authority to do that based on the weather conditions and protecting the safety of our employees. The item that I have issue with or had concern with, and I did, uh, contact our senior commissioner, that would be you, Commissioner Walker.
Yes, sir.
Not an agent term, okay.
Okay, I am a senior.
And did indeed try to make contact with the other commissioners as well, maintain contact with our human resources director, Lucy Pope, and tried to maintain contact with our road and bridge, uh, Mr. Harry Walker. And on our personnel policy manual, uh, item number three, it says, once a decision has been made to close any governmental facility, the county judge or county commissioner making the decision or his or her staff shall make every attempt to notify local media, media to inform citizens of such closure. Affected county department heads will also be notified of the closure. I did take, uh, the action of notifying KBTX so they could put it on that channel three. I did, uh, through texting, notified, um, Tom Turner so he could put it on the radio. Through our human resources director, Lucy Pope, and her contact list and some of the folks that I also contacted, we tried to let the elected officials and the department heads know, my concern was in notifying the employees and to answer, are we open, are we closed? I did not think of it until day two, and it wasn't my original thought, but Vanessa Brzezinski in the elections administrator's office on, I guess, Tuesday said, do you want me to update the website? And my comment to that was, why didn't I think of that? Well, I don't update the website, that's why I didn't think about it, but once you got the word, you put it on Monday that the county's closed on Tuesday, is that correct? And then on Tuesday, after confirmation, the county's closed on Wednesday, she updated the scrolling at the top of our website, advising that the county would be closed again. And I'm just wondering, is that something that we need to incorporate in our policy or is it just something we need to think about in the future and take care of it? Because I personally did not think about it and I thought that was absolutely brilliant. So.
I like, when I got the notification, I called my employees.
Okay.
And I would think that, you know, most department heads would do the same. Now, I know it's a different thing for road and bridge and the sheriff's office, cause road and bridge is on call and sheriff's office, they have to work.
Right, and I did talk with the sheriff and, and I said, you know, you need to call the shop for your office and employees, and he said, I already do. I said, thank you, so.
So is it, is it, would, would you think, Mr. County Attorney, that would be necessary to incorporate into the policy?
Uh, this policy's at your discretion, uh, there are a lot of things in here that, uh, don't have to be in here, and so if, I don't, I don't mean to call this race one way or the other, but let's say there's another county judge, uh, that's sitting in your spot in April.
Mm-hmm.
That person having that information.
Well, actually it wouldn't be till January, unless I, okay.
Yeah, 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 you're right.
All right.
January. Or let's say it's someone else, uh, in the future that doesn't have this.
Well said.
No sense in reinventing the wheel and having that person have the same epiphany too late.
Yeah.
Or at least midstream like you did. So if you think that it's helpful, uh, I mean, the base, the purpose of a contract, very similar to the purpose of a personnel agreement, is so that expectations will be met. You don't wanna have unmet expectations because then you have a level of frustration and then you have revolt, then you have people ticked off. So if this were to be helpful in any way, to avoid unmet expectations or to educate a different county judge or different commissioners for that matter, then I don't see any reason not to put it in there.
Mary, you look, you look like you want to say something.
I've been in a session at county management risk conference in Galveston and I have the district attorney from Rockport that'll be on the panel with me along with the Orange County H.R. Director on this very issue. Um, yeah, I, I agree with everything he just said. I think, uh, having a plan on how to let people know and everyone knows what that plan is before anything happens is always a good idea, cause I have personally experienced Hurricane Harvey with every county in South Texas on the coast going up and what has happened to those employees when they didn't know.
Yeah.
And it's been a real problem. Um, I, as a tax employee, I don't think it's written in our policy, but we have a system where an SMS, the text message goes out, but of course, we're an A to five type company, we're not sheriff's office and county. But we know and we follow Travis County's closing procedures, of course, that's the last of the news, it scrolls underneath. I get a text message either early in the morning or the night before that we are closed or we have delayed opening. Um, I think it's a good idea to let everybody know, it's clear, we're gonna let you know. Um, whoever manages your website, I think we do at CRA, but if you could do your own posting and, and your employees know, check the website, uh, we'll send text messages when we can, um, and let everyone know where you're at and what's gonna happen. Clear communication's everything.
Do you, does, does she have the ability to do that at home?
She, Vanessa?
The secretary?
Oh, Cherie?
Yes.
Cherie, do, do you?
I do, when my laptop's not in my kids locker at school.
Okay, and, and Vanessa does have the ability at her home.
And the only reason I said that is cause the former judge said everything goes through his secretary for us to put on a website, so.
Well, these.
Yeah, you can have a text message.
Vanessa and Cherie have been working in tandem as we go through the process, so.
I was just gonna add that once you made the official call last week, both our office and the sheriff's office also blasted it on the Facebook page.
Right.
Because that was us.
And I even, and, and I even asked the sheriff to put it on his Facebook, cause I know he has a lot of following, but I didn't have a box to check, update website, and I didn't even think about it, and I tell Vanessa call and I thought it was brilliant, so.
Who's your emergency management coordinator?
That'd be Mr. Lilly. That'd be Mr. Lilly, in the doorway.
That's a perfect place for it to sit, the responsibility of that information, to be in contact, just in that way, you know, this is the judgment. And you could post some work information with someone else, and if you can't.
We do. I have a, I also have my own Facebook page, Grimes County Emergency Management, and normally, I basically mirror whatever the sheriff's office posts on there, so depending, emergency-related, so folks will go to their sites, on the line, so we're trying to cover all the bases, so that people get that information.
It was their website for another county, where I was taking pictures of their website by people, so I could send via text whoever had cell phone service in South Texas. It was crazy. Harvey just destroyed.
And Mr. Lilly is our emergency management coordinator, but I get the title above him on the director position. So I just, again, I just want to make sure that we have a way of letting our employees know. If we're satisfied, what we've done in the past, okay, I don't think it covered all the bases, so I'd like to see us modify, or at least have a box to check, like I suggested.
What wording would you like to add after that?
Could I make a proposal?
You sure may.
Paragraph three that you wanted to tinker with is after the word "closure," pick out the period, and then it would read, "And shall have the county's website updated to reflect such closing."
Awesome.
Websites plural.
The county only has one website.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Should you add Facebook to that, too?
Well, we have all three Facebook pages on our website as well. Different links, it says, Facebook, and then all the sheriff, the emergency management, and the DA.
I, yeah. I would suggest that I, and the rest of commissioners, we would do it on the county website, and then the others that want to update their Facebook and so forth, would take lead from the county website. Okay? So, Cherie, did you capture that language?
Yes.
Thank you.
She's capturing it as you speak.
Okay.
Have you considered doing texting to employees, one time last, and that text would have that information?
Well, that, you know, that would work great, except that some people have new county phones and didn't have a second charger for that phone. So while they were home, that phone was dead. I won't tell you who that was, but. He is currently rectifying that problem, but, so I, you know, I think with the website, we'd probably work it.
I don't want to get a blast.
Yes, ma'am.
Your Honor, and I think Vanessa and I have the same question. Lucy was kind enough to call me.
Right.
And Vanessa's my employee, so I notified her. Who has the ultimate authority to say, "Change the county's website"? I mean, we don't want to get on there and really.
No, I understand, but Vanessa did check with me, and she had my response, so as the county's Emergency Management Director, as far as I would be concerned, for the time being, that would be the authority that she needs, and the same thing for Cherie Wagner.
So she had it from you, okay.
She did have it from me.
Good.
And paragraph three says, "Once a decision has been made to close any governmental facility, the county judge or county commissioner making the decision, or his or her staff shall make every attempt to notify media," and then we just added that other provision, so that tells you that it's either the judge or the commissioner who's closing, or their staff.
Could, could you read the last sentence as modified?
Sure. "Once a decision has been made to close any governmental facility, the county judge or county commissioner making the decision, or his or her staff shall make every effort to notify local media to inform citizens of such closure, and shall have the county's website updated to reflect such closing."
Period. Okay. So with that language, I would make a motion that we.
Well, we don't have a, it's not a, no action on this.
Oh, is there no action?
Let's just discuss.
All right.
You can put it on there for next, next.
We will. Cherie, would you put that on for next agenda? Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Would you have that resolved, as far as I'm concerned? I hope. All right. Item number twenty-five, discuss and take action to appoint.
Before we move on that, since it's part of the emergency closing policy, if we could look at item number five, or four and five, rather, having to do with the pay during that time. Number four says, "In the event that an emergency closing is ordered by the Commissioners' Court, regular full-time employees will be paid their regular wages as the day will be recorded as an official closed day. This time off is not considered time worked, and will not be used to determine eligibility for overtime. Any employee who is off, or scheduled to be off on sick leave, vacation, holiday, personal leave, family and medical leaveback, or leave without pay during a period of emergency closure, shall have their leave recorded as scheduled." And then, number five, "An elected official may choose to close his or her office at any time for a public purpose. However, until the county judge or commissioners' court has officially closed, county operations employees shall use accrued leave, vacation and personnel leave, or time without pay. Full-time, regular employees who have no available accrued leave, and who would rather, or, and who otherwise be required to use time without pay as a result of inclement weather or other emergency situations which may not, which have not warranted an official emergency closing, may be allowed to make up that time within the same work week at the discretion of the department." In this, it's saying that we're gonna pay them for the day off. There's nothing in there on, if an employee chooses to come in and work on that day anyway, how is their pay gonna be handled? Because I don't want double dipping to be expected. If, you know, if somebody comes in, like, my office has come in sometimes on a day when it's been closed for weather, and if we work four hours, we work our four hours, and then we got four hours for admin leave.
Okay.
And I think that needs to be specified in here, as to how that's gonna work. It has other little things, but it doesn't say specifically if somebody comes in on their own, or their boss asks them to go in, you know, to work. If they're working, then they don't get, shouldn't get paid the admin for the time that they're working, because they're there. And so I think that needs to be clarified in this.
And number six, it does say, "Non-exempt individuals who are required to work will be compensated time and half, the hourly rate."
Yeah, but I think what Ms. Nichols is talking about, if I tell you not to come in, and you come in and you work, how are we gonna handle that?
How do we handle that?
You get paid for working, it seems.
Yeah. You're gonna get paid one way or the other. If you come in, you get paid.
Paragraph six, the second paragraph, says, "There may be instances wherein only certain facilities are closed, or officially closed. In these instances, affected employees will be compensated in accordance with paragraph four of the policy, and unaffected employees' compensation will be the same as during regular working conditions."
Yeah.
We, we had that incident with me, Judge.
Okay, but hang on.
All I'm saying is, if you come in and work, you get paid for it. If you had to leave, knowing that it was gonna be icy at a certain time, and the court closed for everyone, because there were people driving different distances, and the potential of citizens getting injured, but somebody said, "I think I can do it for the morning, but the afternoon, I'm concerned about," they get paid for the morning, they get admin time for the afternoon?
Right. Does that answer your question, Ms. Nichols?
Yes, but I would like it specified in here.
Well, since we're not taking action on this today, I would ask that you generate the language that you think would clarify that for us.
I'll see.
If you'll work with you, and submit it as an attachment for our next meeting, and then we'll review the language and take action. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Thank you very much. All right. Agreeable commissioners on this?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Let's then move to item, item number twenty-five, discuss and take action to appoint temporary or permanent Grimes County Fairgrounds Administrator due to the passing of Wayne Alphen. As we all know, Wayne passed away last week, we had his services this Monday, but the business of the county moves forward. Randy Krieger, who is a citizen of the county, a former county commissioner, also previously was the Fairgrounds administrator, administrator before he became commissioner, said, he called me, he says, "Hey, Joe, I will step in and take care of doing what we need to do out there until you folks decide what you're going to do with that position." So I thank him very much for taking care of it last weekend, plus this weekend, we have the Go Texan cook-off, and that's a pretty big deal, and Randy is coordinating that with the Go Texan Committee, and I've had a conversation with them. So this weekend is, is covered, but very quickly, we're going to have to make a decision how we're going to take care of this. I know that Lucy Pope, HR Director, has made an internal posting to fill that position, and I don't know if there's a slew of applications coming in on that. I have a couple of thoughts, but I'd like to hear the commissioners' thoughts before I bias your opinions.
Well, I did speak with Mr. Krieger about it, since I understood he was out there helping, and he is willing to work interim until we follow proper procedure in trying to determine if a person to take that position permanently. And he said also he would be willing to put in an application to also take it permanently, if, if, and go through the whole process of the interviews or whatever. But, you know, I just appreciate him, you know, stepping in.
Absolutely.
Just gonna do that. Speak responsibly.
Absolutely.
And the clarification of our policy, we advertise within, and then we advertise outside?
Right. Outside. When you decide, let me know which rock you want to take, and I'll take, I'll put it in the website, and I can have it in the paper also.
So, but, to his question, we go within for how long? Do, are they both, three days?
Three days, then five days out, or more.
If they don't make a choosing for the, for the three days.
Within the three days, okay.
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can take those applications and look at them, and if you want to have more, then you tell her to put it out for.
Well, I guess our situation's a little different, all of us, that we have to have a set meeting, a called meeting, to get together and discuss that, so.
So, is, would, would we?
Were there, were there any local, internal?
I've only had one that came in today with her applicant. I've had a few calls, but no one has come in and put their application in. Randy did come in yesterday and sent out with it.
So do you want to have her go out and put it in the paper and the website, and then set this in two weeks, and you can do your evaluations of the applicants at that point?
Well, wouldn't we go ahead and put someone in temporarily?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. What I'm saying, as far as not letting it languish, two weeks, I don't think a week would be enough time for the paper.
No.
So if you want to do the paper, then say two weeks, but you don't, you've been through this process.
Policy three to advertise before we make a decision?
Three.
So we could put it, I guess, a month out, or three weeks, three weeks out?
Well, we could.
And call it, and call it, and put it on the agenda.
My desire on the, my desire on the agenda was to, I didn't feel like we'd get a permanent person right now.
Oh, sure, yeah.
But to go ahead and do an interim, but I also, and I know I only have 20% of the vote, but I wanted to throw something out for the commissioners to think about. And that is, I've never done that job over there, I've never really watched that job being done over there, but I question in my mind, is that a full-time position for someone in the capacity that we've had it in the past? And my thought, it's just the thought, is there the possibility that maybe we could take that position and incorporate other duties and assignments with that position that would make it seem like more of a full-time position? And I guess, one of the concern, and one of the issues that I have with my thought is that that's not an eight-to-five job over there, because most of the time, the Expo Center is not rented out or contracted out from eight to five on a particular day. There's a lot of weekend work associated with that. I do know that people who have had that position in the past, Wayne, for an example, ran a restaurant, and previously Randy, Randy Krieger had a construction company for whatever that type of construction and maintenance that he did there. And I, and I'm not saying they didn't earn their time on the job, I'm not saying that at all, and wouldn't begin to say that. But I do wonder that if we redesigned this position, maybe added some responsibilities to this, also not just be a, kind of fairground manager, but somebody that had the ability to do some marketing of that facility and promoting it, maybe a little stronger than we currently do. Because our Expo Center's kind of like a church building, a lot of churches are used pretty heavy on Sundays and Wednesdays, and five days a week, they sit there idly by. Our Expo Center is used pretty effectively this weekend, Saturday last weekend, but the other five or six days, it says kind of idly by. So, I'd like us to think about the idea of maybe looking at how we can consolidate some work responsibilities, or pass, redistribute some work responsibilities. If we have to upgrade an employee position, something along that line, to take over part of this responsibility. We do have an attendant over there, Ramon, who does the outside work and does the inside work, and we also get services from the sheriff's office through the diversion crew of helping it, doing a lot of the heavy physical labor. And I'm, I haven't talked to any of y'all about this, because I wasn't supposed to. So, I'm throwing it kind of on you right up front, but I would like us to consider that, or consider some options, or at least think a little bit differently. And as I mentioned to start with, I only have 20% of the vote, I get one out of five, so you could say, be quiet, let's keep doing the way we've always done it. But I'm just, I'm suggesting that there might be a better way to do it than we currently are.
This, this was discussed back in two thousand and ten, when Randy took over and Wayne was hired.
Okay.
About promoting the fairgrounds. The issue with, and I have a long history with the fairgrounds, always instrumental in, when it was built out there, didn't have anything to do with that. I did do some plans for a concession stand that didn't get built out there, but anyway, the fairgrounds need some improvements to be able to be market, marketable, and, and we have, we have this year allocated some funds to, to do some painting out there outside. And Wayne had recently talked to me about that, just a few weeks ago. He said, he was having problems finding some contractors to bid on that project, in the promotion of it. He has had it rented pretty well every weekend for the whole year, which was more than we had previously had.
And I'm not suggesting at all that he wasn't hustling it where he could.
He, he, he had, he had it pretty well booked, and it's booked almost a year ahead of time, because if you, if you tried to get in there for a wedding or something, you'll find that out when, when you call out there and see what is on the books.
I think we talked about the slower days, you know, trying to offer it, maybe, I think I remember that discussion of the pricing, maybe making it more attractive to days during the week.
During the week, yes, we did. When we, when we met with Wayne during the budget process, we did, we did discuss that. And that's some of the things that we talked about doing, and we could certainly do that now, and see what, you know, what happens with that.
I think it's a discussion, it's a great idea that could be had, during the process of looking for a permanent employee there, and adding that to his skill sets, because when you talk about marketing, that means you're gonna have to be savvy in website, and social media, whatever, to advertise and marketing, to really make an impact. So, but I think it's good, because we know the budget for the fairgrounds, and it would be great to get some additional revenue in the, in that area, so I think it's worth looking into. It's a great idea.
We could also work with the chamber if we lower the prices during the week out there, and let them advertise that through the chamber, through our economic development process.
I think that's a good idea.
Judge, if I could make a suggestion, you may want to, be up to the members of the court, but you may want to see what other counties are doing. If you're gonna have to find a salary structure, or put this in the salary structure, you're gonna have to figure out what to pay that person, and you may get a better idea of how much, how full-time it is, or it's not. Certainly Randy would have an idea of what he did previously, and he'd have an idea over the next couple of weeks. But it seems to me that other counties may very well be a good source, because you're gonna have to figure out what to pay this guy, if in fact you. you're gonna have to figure out what to pay this guy, if in fact you move to a full-time position.
Right. No, I understand. And I, you know, I was collecting some of the, the salaries of, of Wayne and, and Ramon, his staff, and then taking a look at some other things, of, you know, if we have four people, maybe we could do it with three people. If we do it with three people, you upgrade one of the individuals because of responsibilities and things of that sort. But I, I take heed to what you say, yes.
I think you could combine the positions of county judge and fairgrounds administrator.
We would have to negotiate additional salary on that, but.
Can I make the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make the motion to appoint Randy Krieger as the temporary Grimes County Fairground Administrator due to the passing of Mr. Wayne Alphen.
I'll second that.
A little bit of clarity on, before we take it to a vote, so would we, we would put them on the payroll as a temporary employee?
Yes.
That's what you should do, if you're gonna.
Yeah. And then at the rate that we were paying Mr., paying Mr. Alphen?
Yes.
Okay. Is that?
Yes.
Part of your motion?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, Commissioner Walker made the motion. Did you second that, Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Husfield?
And did you want me to go in and do a job posting?
Well.
newspaper?
I think we need to move forward with what, let me take the vote on this.
Okay.
So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five oh. My suggestion would be, continue your posting, so if we stay with what we've been doing, we're ready to move on that sooner than later. If we revise, then we can just, those who apply, tell them we've made a modification. If you'd like to reapply, feel free to do so. But I think that would keep the ball rolling for us.
Yeah.
Okay? Discuss, item number 26, discuss and confirm the cooperative working agreement between Grimes County and S A R C, Doing Business as Sexual Assault Resource Center, and authorize the county judge's signatory. That's item number 20, or attachment number 26. This is a budgeted item. It was approved in the budget that the commissioners and the previous judge approved for 2018. I did meet with the representative from S A R C, and she came out and advised me what their organization does, and how they work, and how they work with the county.
And I am here today.
I was gonna say, I'm not about S A R.
Oh, yes. You are indeed. Welcome. So are there any, since the representative is here, anybody have any questions?
Judge, my office is usually asked to sign one of these as well. They are grant-funded, they require this in writing so that they can continue to receive the grant funding. The only obligation the county has is what you fill in on page two, and I would say, it says, Grimes County Courthouse, and you can leave it courthouse, or you can just take out courthouse, and Grimes County will utilize the resources of the rape crisis center. And that's effectively what you're agreeing to do. And so they need this in writing for their funding. They need, this shows what their commitment is to the county. It's, you can terminate this at any point, and they, I suspect there is a desire to have something in that paragraph E that says the county will use their resources, but you're not paying any money, you're not committing to Alphen, you're not committing time, you're only committing to utilize what they have to offer.
And, and I did indeed call and ask, what was the kind of language we've used in the past, and that was part of our conversation, because I, it wasn't gonna obligate us to something we haven't done in the past, so.
I would put, Grimes County will utilize the resources of the Grimes County Rape Crisis Center.
Cherie Wagner is writing that in as you speak. Any further discussion?
I don't have any. I make the motion that we confirm the cooperative working agreement between Grimes County and S A R C, D B A, Sexual Assault Resource Center, and authorize the county judge's signatory.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski, item number 26 of our agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Gratefully, there's only one, thank you, ma'am, for being here. Gratefully, there's only one other item on the agenda.
I move we adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
A second.
There's a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let the record show, that it's 11:55, we did this less than three hours.